Okay, good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock and I'm going to call to order the April 6, 2021 Placerville Planning Commission meeting. If everyone could please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Evening, everyone. It's six o'clock and I'm going to call to order the April 6, 2021 Placerville Planning Commission meeting. Everyone can please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Evening, everyone.
Oh, it's an echo.
April 6, 2021.
Repeat. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, sorry about that. I think we got the echo issue taken care of. All right, Mr. Painter, will you please call roll?
Yes, Member Friend.
Here.
Vice Chair Godberg.
Here.
Member Keeney.
You're.
Chair Lepper.
Here.
Member List.
Here.
Okay, great. Our next item is our consent calendar. We'll adopt our agenda and approve our meetings from prior meeting, our minutes, I'm sorry, from the prior meeting. Do any of the members of the commission have any questions or comments related to, yes, Member Keeney?
Uh, yes, Ms. Lepper, I would like to make amendment to our agenda, item number three, video presentation, use and interpretation of the Secretary Interior standards. Um, I would request that we move that later in our meeting in deference to the people who are joining us for the public hearings. I recommend that we move it either as item number seven or after New Business, make it item number eight. I'll just go ahead and put it out there that we move it to item seven.
Great, I agree. Uh, I believe we need a motion. Do we need a motion to do that then?
Yes.
Well, I'll second what I perceive to be have been a motion.
Great, so we have a motion on the second to move the educational workshop to New Business, item number seven, and move bylaws to item number eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and so with that motion, I'm sorry, covered approving the minutes and the agenda then?
My motion was just regarding the agenda.
Perfect. Okay, so does anyone have any questions regarding the minutes from last meeting?
I'll move to adopt.
Great.
I second.
Go ahead, Ms. Friend.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Commissioner Friend, second by Commissioner List to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and, okay, great. So communications, Mr. Painter, do we have any communications?
No, none other than what was provided as part of the agenda packets and the items on it tonight.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. All right, so the next portion of our meeting will be dedicated to items of interest to the public. This is the part of the meeting where persons wishing to discuss the commission on matters not on tonight's agenda may speak on subjects within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. The chair will recognize the speaker and speaking time will be limited to three minutes. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the commission on relevant matters not on the agenda at this time? C nine. Okay, go ahead and close that public comment portion and move on to our public hearings. So our first public hearing will be zoning interpretation 2101, the short-term rental use within the Central Business District Zone, which is a continuation of our discussion from March 16th. So I believe, Mr. Painter, do you have the report on this? Or do we just need to?
Yes, staff wasn't, didn't really prepare a script for this particular item. It is a follow-up from your previous meeting and so what is before you is a draft resolution for your consideration. The, the topics within that resolution have to do with the definition of the term and Director Rebus and I can, can go over those if you wish. The another provision is the placing or adding this, this particular use to the list of uses that are permitted under the temporary use permit process and procedure. And the third would be to declare that a short-term rental use be required to provide the minimum of one parking stall per rental unit. So this comes on, on the back of what happened on March 16th where you asked staff to come back forward to you with the resolution for your consideration this evening. I see that the applicant from the March meeting is in the audience this evening and so unless Director Rebus has any following comments, that concludes my brief report.
Great. Do any commissioners have any questions for the staff? Can you report? Commissioner Keeney?
Thank you. Um, my only question is regarding the parking. I think it's a good to require a minimum of one parking space and from what we learned at our last meeting, there is parking available for this particular instance. I had a question for either of Mr. Rebus or Mr. Painter. Is there a extra parking available in our parking garage? I'm not, you know, I don't know how many of these requests the city is going to get for the Central Business District. I know that there's very limited parking on Quartz Alley. So are there spaces available for another property owner to lease from the city for a short-term rental?
Well, I'll chime in at the beginning here. Yeah, I don't have an inventory of, of parking spaces that someone can lease, but typically they are, they are allowed. There is an inventory of leased spaces in city parking lots in general. Specifically to the parking garage, we have to get back to you on the availability of that. I would suspect that during, certainly during COVID, when there was less demand and many businesses, of course, have either curtailed their, their existence and/or reduced their hours and, and presence here downtown, that there may be even more openings than, than I envisioned. But, but I believe Celia Lux mentioned that I think they do lease space currently in one of the city parking lots. I cannot recall whether she said, and she might be able to clarify, if she rents out of the parking garage or one of the surface, other surface lots that the city controls and maintains. But typically to answer your question, yeah, there usually is an inventory of spaces that can be leased.
And are cars allowed to park overnight?
Uh, in a lease space, I believe you can. Um, there, there may be some restrictions to that if they are doing maintenance in that particular lot for some reason. Or in the past, of course, as you know, we've had lots that have been used for other purposes such as farmers markets and things like that. So if there's a, an event in that case, there, there could be a restriction or a notice that those people that lease spaces, there may be some limited uses of those facilities at that time.
Okay, then it would just be up to the property owner to make sure that their renter has space available. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
I have a small follow-up question to that. Is there any requirement for where the parking is located with regards to the unit?
Well, in, in what, in the city's parking regulations, which is 1044 City Code, there are regulations as to if you have an established use, that yes, there is a proximity of where that parking either needs to be onsite, under the complete control of the property owner, of the use that's being taking place on that lot, or within a certain distance. And I think the, the measurement is 300 feet. The code does specify that that off-site or satellite, as I would call it, parking area needs to be also under the control of that particular person, meaning owner. But the city has in the past, in my tenure here, we have entertained and allowed for leased spaces, especially spaces that are leased by the city because we, we can control, control that. For property owners that maybe leased from another property owner, uh, I think there's been one example of that. Um, I think it had to do with the Sequoia facility there off B Street. They had to prove and provide evidence that those, those satellite property owners allowed the, the Sequoia, in that particular instance, the allowance to park there when I think a church wasn't having church services or during other times. So does that answer your question?
It does. So it is reviewed that it's not three miles away and claimed to be the parking spot for that place. So yes, it does. Thank you. Do any other?
Yeah, I hate to continue this parking thing, but I think it might be a little bit more complicated than, than we realize. So in the staff report, zoning code section 10 dash four dash four subsection E is cited and in there, the verb is that the, the owner has to provide, they have to provide this parking. Okay, so there, there's an onus there, has to be, there's requirement. So I'm a little bit concerned about the overnight component. And it seems to me that an allowance needs to be made that whoever's occupying that, the, the room, okay, gets a, gets a path, parking pass or something that code enforcement recognizes as, oh, they're in, they're, they're parking here based upon the allowance or the requirement for code. And that, that would exclude parking on the city street, I would think. So any of the city lots, center parking and all that, wherever, those would be eligible, but and on-street parking would not. But I think there needs to be some mechanism to identify and allow for the overnight parking. I'm uncomfortable with a statement that will some of the leased sites allow overnight parking. We have to make, if we're going to allow this, we have to make sure we've also provided a mechanism by which the, the transient tenant, and I hate that term, but the transient occupant can park legally without worry about being hassled by parking enforcement, if that makes sense. So I don't know if staff has an opinion on that or can comment?
Yeah, I'll make a quick comment if I may, Madam Chair. Maybe Andrew, you can chime in if I misspeak. But basically, the way we looked at this particular application individually is it is an existing dwelling unit. Therefore, the parking is already provided. So it's a de minimis impact with respect to this individual application. But you have to understand that the resolution is being applied to the Central Business District as a whole. So this will allow staff then to review future applications where it may, where we may call into play the need to examine the parking impact. But for this particular case, there was no parking impact because the parking is already provided for the existing unit.
Well, I can appreciate the de minimis assessment of Pierre, and in this case, I would agree. But let's say an individual is renting short-term this space and, but they're going to rent it for, you know, 21 days, right? They're within the, the allowance there. They're going to rent it for 21 days. They're parking a vehicle overnight. It, it's unclear to me where they can park overnight and, and they're not going to run into a problem with code enforcement.
Okay, well. Well, I'm making an assumption that there would be parking wherever a full-time resident would be parking, who may be living in this unit. So they can either lease a parking spot so that they have a given spot that they know that they can rely upon, or they can shuffle their car around. But that would be up to the individual tenant, tenant, or that would be between the arrangement of the landlord and the tenant. In other words, a landlord could pay for that lease parking spot or not. It's the same as the businesses that some businesses pay for lease parking spots for their employees and some don't.
Okay, now I understand. So a tenant, yes, you, you may rent this room and you can stay here for, for no more than 30 nights, right? I think that's, that's the limit. And then as far as parking goes, if you have a vehicle and you want to keep it overnight, you'll have to consider leasing a space to park your vehicles. That basically how that works?
That's correct.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other commissioners with questions on this for staff?
I do have a couple of other questions, not on parking.
Okay.
With regards to the resolution itself and the specific language, just as a general, a general question, not only on this one, but on the one we're going to see here in the next item, they're not numbered, but there are two whereas's towards the bottom where they specifically talk about, for example, the Blue Bill Building LLC. So, so I'm just wondering if it's necessary and or appropriate to have that level of detail in, in the whereas, if that whereas is, is necessary. Um, because this is going to be, if we pass this resolution, it's going to be broad for the entire CBD and not just specific to, to the Blue Bell, for example. And so I'm just wondering if, if that needs to be there. The second question I have, where was, I have to find it. So give me just a second. Okay, this, in section two, in a definition, short-term vacation rental, et cetera. And so in the resolution, as well as in the staff report, we provide for cooking, there's this thing with cooking and the staff in the report goes to some length appropriately to talk about how a microwave and a hot plate or something would not meet, a hot plate or microwave in lieu of a full kitchen would not suffice, you know, this requirement. Okay, I get that. So it seems to me, in that case, then, we should define kitchen. We should say it requires a kitchen. And, and if we need to, we need to define kitchen. Otherwise, the resolution simply says cooking and, and cooking is pretty broad. So I, I'm not sure that the resolution as written with regards to that item is sufficient. And I, I would think that we would need to change it and be a little bit more specific. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, well, I will, I will continue on the thought about the cooking because that was one of the questions that came up for me. Um, not necessarily with regards to this unit, but the way it is described in the report and in the, the declaration, the resolution is how would that apply to a, a home who wants to rent out or any kind of unit, say as a two-bedroom and wants to rent out the one-bedroom on Airbnb? I've never rented a one-bedroom that way, but I know people who have and so I know it's available. Would they then have to have full access to the kitchen in that situation for it to be eligible? Or would, for example, a small setup in a room similar to a hotel room be sufficient? I was a little hazy on how the requirements would come into play across the board with regards to cooking. Does that make sense?
Madam Chair, I can take a stab at that. The main purpose or the thrust behind staffs ensuring that the unit has cooking facilities is, uh, prior to actually issuing a temporary use permit, staff is going to require that the unit receive a certificate of occupancy for a dwelling unit, or will have an inspection performed to ensure that it, that it meets the minimum definitions of a dwelling unit. In other words, it has a sanitation facilities, places to eat and to cook. So it would be a full kitchen in accordance with the building code. And this is to prevent the situation where somebody or a business owner, we're speaking of strictly commercial units now, um, where somebody has a closet or some storage space, we wouldn't want somebody then to do some quick fixes and just put in connections for a hot plate or a microwave. That doesn't qualify as a kitchen facility. And so we want to prevent that. Um, and to your question about if somebody is actually hosting, so I would say host versus unhosted, or in this case would be an owner occupied, single-family dwelling that has multiple rooms and the property owner wishes to advertise a room under, say Airbnb as a vacation rental. I think that would be up to the owner on whether or not they want to give kitchen privileges. And so in that case, um, that would be up to the, the host because it's, it's owner occupied and the host is on the premises. Where in this case, um, it's not that way. It is an independent dwelling unit within a commercial building. And so we don't differentiate between hosted versus non-hosted.
Okay, that answers.
Madam Chair, if I could then follow up with Pierre. So Pierre, there is a definition of a dwelling unit, right? Dwelling unit is defined and it's someplace. And in that definition, it talks about a kitchen?
Yes.
Okay, then I think a very simple, at least would satisfy me. And I would simply change the wording in section two, um, to read, "A short-term or vacation rental is a single dwelling unit, comma, as defined, comma." With that little clause, "as defined", refers back to wherever this definition for a dwelling unit lives. And then to me, that, that satisfies defining what the kitchen and the living room and this bedroom and all that stuff would be.
I'm not sure I'm following. Are you, are you directing?
I'm, I'm simply saying I, I would prefer, I would prefer section two in the proposed resolution to read that first sentence. "A short-term or vacation rental is a single dwelling unit, comma, as defined, comma, containing blah, 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 blah." I, that, that's what I'm saying.
I don't have any issue with that change unless Mr. Painter wants to comment on that.
I guess I'm not seeing a discernible difference between what's, what's provided for you and what you just said, Member Friend.
Yeah, because I think, I think the way, at least in my view, sir, as, as I am proposing it by, by taking as defined and making it a clause that way, it's being very specific that, that a dwelling unit has a definition as opposed to we're simply defining this as a single dwelling unit. I think this is providing emphasis to the dwelling unit is defined. And that way, that definition of a dwelling unit, which Pierre alluded to, contains specifics for these other components. So then I don't care the fact that you, we say cooking because in the definition of dwelling unit, I'm led to believe it talks about what a kitchen is. So I'm, I'm good with that.
Oh, I have a, I'm, I'm pretty confused about the, the change here. And I am wondering if in that change, if we say the unit is defined in the building code or the Placerville City Building Code, um, because I heard Pierre refer to, you know, what components actually go into a full kitchen?
You could even say.
Would that take care of the issue you have, Michael, about if we just refer to our own building code, making sure that this dwelling unit, we specify that it meets those definitions? Would that take care of your concern?
You know, that's fine because anything that ties it back, any, anything that ties back the specificity of cooking, yeah, I'm, I'm good. And so if there's a, there, clearly there is a specific section of building code. I just don't have it in front of me and Andrew Mike. But if we reference that, I just did as defined, which kind of implies it's, it's there and you can go look it up. But if, if we wanted to add the specific, uh, building code section that, that defines a dwelling unit, that would, again, that's the same thing for me. Yes.
Chair, Chair Lepper and members of the commission, yeah, I, I can quickly pull up the, the city code definitions of the terms kitchen and dwelling unit. If you give me a, a second or two, I can, if that's helpful.
Sure, that's good for me. Thank you, Andrew.
Definitely. Okay, um, while we wait for that, I will, do we hear from the applicant in this one, Pierre?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so I will ask.
Get the applicant a chance to speak.
Yeah, while Andrew's looking that up, I'll go ahead and let the applicant have a chance to speak. Ms. Lux, do you have anything to add to the discussion or?
Well, I'm not sure. I, I, I think that we would fit the criteria. We do have three leased parking spaces. Two are in Quartz Alley that we leased from the Raffetto family and one of them is in the Tetra Lot, which we lease from the city. Um, we would make one of those spaces available to a short-term tenant. And it would be, it would be very specific. There wouldn't be parking on Main Street, that sort of thing. And that would be isolated for that. Um, this place has a kitchenette, what they call kitchenette. It does not have an oven. So I'm a little concerned about this kitchen definition and where that leaves me. It's a two-burner stove, what they call a three-in-one unit, a two-burner stove, um, a sink and a refrigerator, all in one, in one unit. Um, it's, it's been a residence, so it's been a dwelling unit for considerable years. I just, I don't know what the definition of kitchen is, but I agree with, I agree with the gentleman who's asking, that should be defined.
That should. Madam Chair, if I can ask you, um, it has a sink that's separate from the bathroom, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, see, I, I would think a kitchen sink, a sink that's separate from the bathroom. I don't think an oven would be required. I think a cooktop of some kind. I could see, I, I really, I think a kitchen sink is probably one of the key, a separate sink, dedicated sink is probably one of the key definitions. I, I don't think kitchenette's going to be a problem. I really don't.
Okay.
Chair, Chair Lepper, I'm ready.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Get the right screen up here. Okay, so are you seeing several terms in front of you? It's a.
We are.
Okay. I can read it into the record if you'd wish, or it's right in front of you. But that's the current city definition of a dwelling unit. We also have definitions for an ADU. So it's slightly different. And let me know when I can scroll down to the definition kitchen. Let me know when you're ready.
I don't know enough about this to be able to read this because I have people's faces across.
I will, I will go ahead and read the, the dwelling unit one. A dwelling unit in a row of at least two such units in which unit has.
That's townhouse dwelling.
I'm, you're right. I'm sorry. I'm reading. Okay, good. So the dwelling unit is building or self-contained portion thereof designed or used as living quarters for not more than one family, a manufactured home on a permanent foundation system, rental unit such as in a motel, hotel or rooming house containing cooking or housekeeping facilities exclusive of mobile homes. Okay.
We, we need to go then, but if you go to ADU, if you go to ADU, which is the next one, it's interesting because it says shall include a kitchen as defined herein. So I'm presuming, which is interesting because dwelling unit doesn't include kitchen. It says cooking facilities, but then the dwelling accessory, ADU, and Andrew, is this considered an ADU?
No.
And if, yes or no?
No, it is not.
Okay, so, so that kind of confuses me because I like the ADU definition because, you know, I think that's kind of what we're, what we're getting to. I don't know where the herein is. It must be located in the document someplace.
Yeah, it's not an ADU because it's not attached or detached from the primary, a primary dwelling.
So the question is, you know, how do we feel about containing cooking facilities? Cooking facilities to me reads something permanent, such as a sink, a sink and a cooktop. So that would not be a hot plate and or a microwave. Those aren't permanent. Those aren't built.
Perhaps our definition of kitchen might, might assist you.
Yes.
Uh, could scroll down.
Okay. Okay, so for the good of all, a kitchen shall mean a room or portion thereof containing permanent facilities designed and used for food preparation, cooking, eating and dishwashing. A kitchen shall include all of the following: a sink with hot and cold running water, a range or stove top and an oven, at a minimum, an apartment-sized refrigerator of more than five cubic feet capacity, and built-in dish and utensils, utensil storage spaces. In addition to the aforementioned improvements, a kitchen may also include any of the following: microwave oven, convection oven, hot plate. Microwave oven, convection oven, hot plate or automatic dishwasher.
Oh, boy. All right.
So, um.
Madam Chair, I I would recommend that we continue to hear from the applicant and the public hearing and then bring it back after we're done.
Okay, um, can we go back from the screen sharing, Mr. Painter? Thank you. Okay. Um, so do you. Uh, Ms. Lux, do you have anything further to add to this right now or do commissioners have other questions for Ms. Lux?
Chair Lepper, I I can address the first question by member. Uh, friend about the resolution and the whereas. Uh, just to inform the commission, those are typically formulated. And in an essence, serve as findings. So it's a finding of fact that the city did receive an application. From Celia Lux representing, you know, the Blue Bell LLC building. So it. And that building happened to be happens to be located in the Central Business District. So it's just a finding that we did receive. That application for the zoning interpretation. Hence, the reason why we're here for this particular item.
Yes, that sort of spawned the discussion in the first place.
Chair Lepper, if I if if I may make a clarification too, I think it's important for the commission to understand that what's. What's before you is a resolution to allow for an expansion. Of a particular use that staff would have the ability to approve. Under a temporary use permit application. So the commission uh needn't get too into. The minutia about the individual application because the individual application is not before you. You're looking at it more, a little more generally about allowing for a temporary use permit for this type of use. Within the Central Business District. Once this is said and done, this would then give staff the authority to then. Um, consider and issue a temporary use permit for this application that meets all the criteria.
Okay, so let's go.
I just want to clarify, um, here that uh. These temporary or special temporary use permits will run for about a year. And we don't have a timeframe for the overarching development of the ordinance that will uh more. Clearly define wh- what we're talking about here with these uh short term rentals. So for a year at a time, uh, these will come up for review and you'll look at the application, the situation of. Each one that comes before you for their suitability. Is that right?
Yes, that 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 is precisely correct.
And then at some point in the future, we'll have the uh, the city will adopt an ordinance that regulates. Uh, the short term rentals uh throughout the city i- in in all the different uh zones. The next one up that we're going to consider is in a highway commercial, for instance, that. That larger ordinance will address all of the different zones in the city where there might be these short term rentals.
Yes, that is correct. Once once the city establishes a vacation rental ordinance, it will then. Supercede and we would eliminate the temporary use permit application for them.
Thanks.
Okay, good. So let's go ahead and move forward. Um, do any commissioners have any further questions specifically to the applicant on this? Okay, great. So I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment on this matter at this time. Remind, oh, yes, sorry, Mr. Lux.
I'd like to ask the applicant. In you, the unit that you're proposing to rent out, is there an oven?
There is not an oven.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further questions right now, I'm going to open up the public comment on the matter. A reminder that speakers are limited to three minutes. Comment should be civil and remain to the matter at hand. Uh, Mr. Rebus, do we have public comment today?
I am not seeing anyone. Let me see.
I see some hands raised in the attendees.
Okay, I have a uh Dina uh. DePauli uh wishing to speak.
Okay, Mr. Pauli, go ahead. Are you there? Mr. Pauli? Okay, her hands seem to have gone down. I'm not hearing anything.
Yeah, I I lowered her hand. Oh, it's now up again.
Okay.
Go ahead and speak.
We can, you're off mute. Oh, you're off mute now. Go ahead and try now. Mr. Pauli, can you uh, can you speak? No. Okay, I'm not sure what's going on there.
Check the mute, she should check the mute on her own personal phone.
Yeah, it's clicking on and off the mute button, I can see. Um, but right now it looks unmuted, so I'm not sure why we can't hear her.
Maybe we can move on to the next speaker, Madam Chair, and then we'll go back to her.
Okay, let's go to the next one for now.
That would be David and Amber Ross.
David and Amber Ross, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting a message that David and Amber Ross are using an older version of Zoom. And they're not permitted uh to speak, so I'm going to promote them, the panelists, and that'll allow them to talk.
Okay, maybe that's what's happening with Miss DePauli as well. Hey, there, you're.
Hi, how's it going, everyone?
Good.
Great, um, now I can see everyone. I wasn't able to before.
Yeah.
Um, I just had a really quick uh. Comment and for the public comment right now, um, just when I typically think of a short term rental. I think of something similar to a hotel room and not specifically a dwelling unit as as. Everyone has been describing and trying to figure out the definition of a kitchen, et cetera. Um, I I don't know in in a typical hotel room, is a is a full kitchen necessary in a short? And should it be necessary in the short term rental?
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have the next speaker, Mr. Rebus?
Uh, yes, the next speaker then will be number eight, five, seven.
Number eight, five, seven.
Good evening, Commission.
Good evening.
Hey, I thoroughly agree. I'm about the kitchen thing. When I rent a. Hotel room when I'm traveling, all I'm looking for is a bathroom. A fridge, a microwave, a bed, shower. Um, the oven, kitchen, cooking thing, I can pay more for an extended stay type hotel. With a full kitchen and pots and pans. Um, if this is just going to be a one year process before an ordinance comes around. I think maybe just the kitchenette kind of level is all you need to look at. Um, I know that Pierre is just asking for a quick review of this, but the commission really should set down the terms. Um, the other thing is the cost, uh, temporary use permit. What does that cost? Is it four hundred dollars a year? What other fees could be expected in this process? Um, and giving back to the kitchen definition, so a modern residential kitchen. Is going to have roughly seven dedicated circuits. Fridge, microwave, dishwasher, disposal. Oven, lights, just. So when you start really nailing down what is a kitchen defined, it can be from A to Z. Um, but the previous caller saying, you know, just basic lodging is probably what would work for now. So just some thoughts on that and the costs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um.
Uh, next speaker is, well, that's it. We don't have any other hands up and. Dina Diopoli is not is not raising her hand.
Okay. Great, so seeing no further public comment on this matter, I'm going to go ahead and post the public comment portion. Return the matter to the commissioners for discussion and action. Um, do commissioners have any further questions for staff or for the applicant prior to our discussion? Okay, if not, then I would entertain a motion on this item.
So, Madam Chair, before we get to a motion, uh, in reading the language. First of all, in consideration of the fact that this is only going to be for about a year or so until the ordinance is finalized. And. Oh yeah, my videos, uh, until the ordinance is finalized. Um, and it reads, it it does read. In section two. Uh, starting at the very end of the second line, it says with permanent provisions for cooking. And and frankly, I I think that's adequate. Um, I presume that when somebody applies for the special use permit. Staff probably does an inspection of the facility that is being planned to be used. And it seems to me that. There's a a separate sink, really, it's probably more important for a sink and a cooktop than anything else. Um, the oven's not required. I was a little bit concerned with the definition. We got into definition of kitchen. I think that's more than we need. Uh, with regards to what we're requiring. I do think this is a, this is up to a long term stay, oh, thirty days, a one month stay. Yeah, I think we need something more than a simple hotel slash motel room. So I I don't have any. Uh, problem requiring some element, uh, some provisions as are laid out here in the resolution. So I I can live with the resolution as it's been written.
Now, Madam Chair, if I can make a comment just for clarification, I think one of the speakers uh made a very good point about. What's, how are we differentiating between a hotel room versus a vacation rental? Vacation rental is an independent. Dwelling unit that's being used for thirty days or less. As opposed to a hotel or motel, you're looking at six units or more where somebody is just sleeping and they have sanitation. Facilities, but you're also looking at twenty-four, seven um onsite management of the site. You have. A a tenant can come in the middle and, you know, in the middle of the night and get their room if they have that room reserved. That's different than a vacation. Rental, which is uh to serve as an individual dwelling unit in the short term basis. Uh, staff is no means trying to create. Um, uh, individual hotel rooms that would be in a building or facility less than six.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Keen.
Uh, Lepper, I'd like to make that motion uh that uh. We follow the recommendation uh that we adopt this uh resolution as drafted by staff, resolution. Twenty twenty-one dash zero one. Uh, that would define the use of short term rental and deem that a short term rental use be permitted. Subject to a special temporary use permit within the Central Business District. While the city completes the process uh under resolution eighty-five thirty. Establish establishing the regulations of short term rentals and so on, as stated on page three of the staff report for this meeting.
I'll second that.
Yes, call roll. The call roll, Mr. Painter?
Chair.
Did I?
This would be typically the the time where there would be a discussion before we actually go to vote.
Okay. Any discussion about the motion?
Well, I'll just add to the discussion to get us going. I think with what we've heard from the public and the comments from the commission, I think. The staff understands the concerns and also we realize this is a, you know, one year at a time with these uh temporary use permits. It allows for some flexibility. I think we understand that we we need to, a- actually, it may be informative and educational for staff as. Of the ordinance is developed, you know, what actually is sufficient, what will work for. Those folks who want to do these uh short term rentals in the city.
Agree, well stated.
I would just add a little bit to that. I mean, I think when you're looking at the Central Business District, I think this is a region that is. A tourist destination. Um, so I think it's a beneficial use in that area. I also think, you know, looking at the staff's report from. Last week, there's only about fifteen to twenty residential units uh like this that exist in this uh zone. Um, and I don't think that there's going to be any detrimental impacts to the surrounding properties or communities. Uh, from this, which is one of the requirements of issuing a special temporary use permit.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Call the question.
I, yes, call for roll, roll call?
Yeah, sure.
Yes, sorry, call the roll for the motion.
Member friend.
First timer.
Hi.
Vice Chair Godberg.
Hi.
Member Keeney.
Hi.
Chair Lepper.
Hi.
Member List.
Hi.
Okay, so the most in passes five euro to approve the um current short term rental resolution. Under zoning interpretation twenty-one zero one. So congratulations, Ms. Lux, and good luck.
Thank you.
We'll work with you going forward. Uh, a reminder that there is a ten day appeal period for all. Planning Commission decisions. And with that, we can move on to the next public hearing of the evening, which is item number five. Zoning interpretation twenty-one dash zero two, short term rental uses within the highway commercial zone. Mr. Painter, do you have the report?
I do, thank you. Uh, this request is filed by David and Amber Ross. They own property located at thirty thirty-eight Orchard Lane. Which is within the highway commercial zone, or what I will call in the in the future during my discussion here is as the HWC zone. Uh, their property contains two residential structures. One is comprised of. Of three attached units of three hundred ninety square foot each and the second. Or fourth unit is detached from those three, and that's four hundred and thirty square feet of floor area. Each unit has is fully independent with kitchen, bathroom, bedroom and living area. The property also has area for tenant parking. According to the applicants, the units were built in the late nineteen forties for an intended use as a motel. Attachment A of staff's report is the applicant's submittal package. Where uh the applicants have provided uh maps and and graphics showing the location. Uh, of the site of their property. They've also provided exterior photos of the building, some deed information. Uh, so a summary of their of their detailed request to rent the unit short term. For overnight accommodations, as well as a a future uh development intentions for use of their property. Orchard Lane is a private road easement with vacant land. Uh, within vacant land that in the early two thousands had, in my, when I first moved here to the city. It had a pickup truck camper shell retail business. So there was a structure there. Uh, not on the the applicant's property, but the the large area there as you, as you drive into Orchard Lane. Uh, it's rather noticeable that there's, there's some vacant land. Um, Orchard Lane is a private road easement, as I mentioned. It intersects with Broadway, the immediately east of Broadway's intersection with Schnell School Road. And Orchard Lane ends at the south end at Hangtown Creek. Orchard Lane serves access to the Ross's property as well as a single family residence with an ADU at thirty thirty-nine Orchard Lane. And a single family residence at thirty forty-one Orchard Lane. And both of those residential structures are located opposite the Ross property to the east. Figures two and three of the staff report show the extent of the HWC zone. There are two such HWC zones in the city. There's a western section and an eastern section. And the Ross's property is located in the eastern section. Figure three of staff's report shows the the exact location of the Ross's property within that HWC zone. Uh, as you'll notice, there, the entirety of Orchard Lane and several parcels parcels along Wilsey Road located north of Hangtown Creek. Are also within the HWC zone. Many of these are residential used par- properties containing residential uses. Of note, again, figure three also shows segments or portions of an R one six single family zone. To give you an idea of where where that demarcation is. The Hangtown Creek kind of serves as that bifurcation. So properties on Martin Lane. And part parcels that are. south of Broadway and north of Hangtown Creek are in the HWC zone. The city received public comment regarding this request this evening. And the, their comments were provided and are provided as attachment C of the staff report. They included a neighborhood petition in opposition to the request citing concerns that the request was result in the loss of affordable long-term rental units and that noise, traffic, and the short-term turnover people by this use will impact the neighborhood negatively. The Ross's property and other existing ground floor residential uses within the HWC zone are considered under city code as compatible, but they're non-conforming uses as they are residential uses located in other than a residential zone. Compatible uses under our city code that are non-conforming, like these residential uses, may continue indefinitely. The, the purpose and intent of the highway commercial land use designation and zone classification is to provide for and to develop highway-oriented uses and facilities that cater to the highway traveling public, to create conditions conducive to a convenient and desirable environment for customers and employees, to protect areas in this designation from encroachment by unrelated and incompatible uses, and to differentiate freeway and travel-oriented uses from those of the downtown business district and other commercial areas. allowable and permitted uses in the HWC designation and classification are hotels and motels, service stations, retail sales and services, eating and drinking establishments, and one-in multi-family residential uses when they are above or below the ground floor. What, what that means is that the HWC, like, like the other commercial zones in the city, allow for mixed uses. And the language there, where one-in multiple, multiple family residential uses went above or below the ground floor, the ground floor would be, must be a commercial use, and so residential uses can be above or below it. Hence the mixed use aspect to it. The city's general plan governs, governs the direction of future land use in the city. And those existing non-conforming uses at the time of adoption of the general plan in nineteen ninety and the zoning ordinance in nineteen ninety-one were anticipated to eventually change over time to the general plan-directed highway-oriented uses that are consistent with the HWC zone's purpose and intent. The applicants would like to convert their four existing apartment units located within the HWC zone to offer them as transient, short-term rental units. Again, thirty days or less occupancy, a type of lodging use. Lodging uses conform to and meet the intent and purpose of the HWC zone in that it is a use that caters to the highway traveling public and would be convenient to the public because the HWC zone is located along the US Highway fifty corridor. The applicant's request is zoning interpretation by the commission this evening, under its authority under Placerville zoning code ten-four-seven A five, to consider transient short-term rental uses within the HWC zone, subject to the interim process that we talked about in the previous item, the special temporary use permit regulations, while staff prepares code amendments regulating short-term rentals in the city. Staff has prepared a draft resolution for the commission consideration that would authorize the request. That concludes my staff report, and the applicants are in the audience this evening.
Thank you very much. Do any commissioners have questions for staff on the report? Okay, seeing none at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up to the applicant. Mr. Ross, I believe you're here. If you'd like to speak to your application.
Yes, I, I prepared a short statement. How, how long do I have?
Um, how long do you, is your statement?
Like, three to, three to four minutes.
Totally perfect.
Okay, great. It's, it's all right. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna kind of read it. Okay, great. Right, so my name is David Ross. My wife Amber and I own the property at thirty thirty-eight Orchard Lane. I just want to quickly introduce myself and my wife. I was born in Placerville at Marshall Hospital and grew up here until I graduated high school at Union Mine. Mr. List was actually one of my high school teachers. Amber and I met in college in Santa Barbara, and we moved back to the area about five years ago. We both live and work in the community. Amber's a real estate agent, and we are expecting our first child here in August. We both love Placerville and enjoyed seeing its growth with restaurants and other small businesses, and we are excited to contribute to that growth. It has been a dream since I was a little kid to help build this community and own businesses here. I would, I'd first like to address the largest concern of the planning commission and some residents of the community, and that is reducing the number of low-income housing units within the city of Placerville. And just a few points I want to go over here. These units were built in nineteen forty-nine and in, and are in need of serious updating. They do not have many of the necessary long-term rental needs, such as heating, cooling, proper bathroom ventilation, and even plumbing. These apartments are extremely small and more suitable for short-term rental stays, as we are proposing. At last month's meeting, the vice chair Nicole Gottberg, sorry for getting your name wrong, even stated she can't imagine someone wanting to live in a space like this as a permanent living condition, as she was comparing the size of her three hundred fifty square foot office to the short-term rental in the central business district that we were just discussing. From a business perspective, full, fully remodeling and adding household needs couldn't be supported by the current long-term rental rates for such small square footage. Just, these are under four hundred square feet and would result in negative cash flow. These units are so small, they can't justifiably be rented for much more than they currently are, even when fully updated. Some of the units have multiple tenants plus multiple pets living in a less than four hundred square foot area resulting in excess wear and tear on the unit and undesirable living conditions for the tenants. It is our intention to fully update and renovate the existing four units into a stylish hotel alternative for possible visitors and market them on Airbnb. These rooms would be available for guests approved and verified by Airbnb and the management of the business, including myself. It's five quick more points for benefits of the city. I just wanted to list. Thirty thirty-eight Orchard Lane is zoned highway commercial and is stated in the staff report, short-term rentals are conducive to this zoning. Placerville really needs lodging, so much so that the city has a hotel incentive program. This should show the community and commission that the city is in desperate need of businesses similar to what we are proposing. If anyone on the commission isn't familiar with that program, I could, I could go into that in more detail. Number three, taxes collected by short-term rentals, businesses far exceed taxes collected from long-term rentals. This would greatly benefit the city. Four, short-term rentals bring cash carrying and credit carrying visitors to downtown shops, restaurants, and businesses. And lastly, if we are able to operate a short-term rental business at the location, it is our plan to further develop the law into more stylish standalone short-term rental units with designated parking, further helping with the lodging shortage and bringing the tourists, bringing tourists and rep to the city. Again, this is all conducive to the highway commercial zoning. I, I was a little disappointed reading the complaint and seeing the signatures on the petition and being labeled as a developer like we are some heartless corporation because we are in, we are really just members of this community. We understand that any change will be met with resistance, but are hoping that level heads will see past the emotional responses and opinions of neighbors. We believe the city and community will benefit from this change and resulting business. And, and that's all. If anyone wants, I, I'm sure you guys are familiar with the, with the hotel incentive program. But I can, I can explain more of that if, if you would like.
Thank you very much. Do any commissioners, any questions for the applicants?
Well, I'll start. Thank you for that presentation, actually. That was very helpful.
For one moment.
Sorry, sir?
I would, I would like to ask staff if I need to excuse myself because I know the applicant.
I don't think so. You don't have an interest in the property, do you, sir?
No, I don't.
You have pride in the student, I would bet.
Yes, I do.
Staff, is there any reason that Mr. List needs to recuse himself from this? Okay. Oh, Pierre, I'm sorry, you are muted.
I'll attempt to render a few comments on that issue, not being an attorney, but sometimes playing one on TV. Basically, when there's a conflict of interest, it's a financial conflict of interest. Does Mr. List stand at benefiting or could it be a detriment to him financially? As far as him knowing the applicants, you know, I think in a small town, a lot of us know, a lot of us. And so if we're all recusing ourselves because we know somebody, I don't think that would be very advantageous to get any work done. So you have to look at yourself, and if you see yourself where you feel you could have a conflict of interest because maybe there were family members or somebody very, very close to you, that might be a different story where you may want to recuse yourself because it's going to influence the way you view the application. You wouldn't be objective. You may a little, be a little bit more subjective and favor the applicant. So that's how I would look at it. So if knowing them is because they were former students and stuff, I would, I would not consider that a conflict of interest. I hope that's helpful.
List, are you comfortable continuing with the hearing?
Thank you. Sir, Mr. Friend, I'm sorry to interrupt you on that.
That's all right, sir. I always yield my time to the gentleman from the north. If I may, then continuing, Mr. Ross, Mr. and Mrs. Ross, and congratulations on the expecting child. I think that's fantastic. So how long have you owned the property?
We, we just recently purchased the property.
In February.
February.
All right, great. Did you purchase it with the intent to move in this direction?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Hey, fair enough. You're absolutely correct in, in pointing out the dearth of lodging that we have here in Placerville. It is one of our, our big challenges and that we have to get people to stay here, actually, because we don't have a lot of places for them to stay. Have you met the neighbors? Some of them, anyway?
We have met some of the neighbors, yes. Just brief, brief contact.
Okay, all right. And then going back to the kitchen issue, can you describe what your plan is? Because I see in the floor plans, you do delineate a kitchen. And can you just describe then what, what the plan is for that? You're obviously going to do a lot of upgrades. What is your plan?
Our, our, our plan is to add a fully updated and functional kitchen.
Okay, so it's got a sink, range, and probably an oven.
Correct.
Okay, all right, great. No additional questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Very much. Do other commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I did.
Yes, go ahead.
So I'm just wondering, are these short-term rentals currently occupied? And if so, how long have the tenants lived there?
Yes, all of the units are currently occupied. Several have been there for just over a year. One, I believe, is less than a year.
Even on the,
Go ahead, Mr..
Even on, on the, the units that are there, at one point, I thought I caught you say that there was more than one person living in one of the units or more than one family in the units or.
That is correct. And in one of the units, there's definitely two adult males living in the, in the unit with a pet. And I believe in, in one of the other units, there's also two, two adults living, male, and I'm not, I'm not sure of the gender of the other, but in, including pets, cats, dogs, et cetera.
Okay, now, in terms of parking, approximately how many cars are parking there on a typical night right now?
The residents, the current residents of the units, none, none of them actually have a vehicle.
I think one does.
There's, yes, excuse me, one, one resident has a vehicle, other, other, other residents do not.
But there's.
And how much? You're anticipating four units. How many parking places are there available on the property?
If you, if you can see on, on some of the, the maps that were in that packet, it, it shows an overhead view and, and the, the current four units are, are on a zero lot line. And there's eight thousand square feet of open space. That is our property. And any of that could be designated as parking. Right now, it's kind of a, an open field with grass growing. But if, if we are able to further develop, we would, we would make those designated parking spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Kean?
Go back to the parking. So I'm, I'm looking at your subject photo page that is in your application and then kind of comparing that to the plot map. There doesn't appear to be room for parking outside or right in front of each of those smaller units. So possibly a occupant would be able to pull up, unload, and then go to the north to the open area to, then to park their car. Is that what you're, is there? You're right on Orchard Lane, so the other people have to be able to pass by this property right in front of those units. Is that? Am I interpreting this right, or is there room for a road as well as allowing for parking right outside the unit?
But you, you are correct. So directly in front of the units, there, that's where the easement is, and the easement goes from Broadway all the way to the creek there. And then that's, I believe, a thirty-foot wide easement. So I guess when you're approaching the units to the west is, is where would be the, the closest place you could park. And so that would be in between the, the building that is UPS, UPS store and the ugly mugs and, and the unit, the first unit there. There's ample parking for even six, six vehicles, if you'd like. And they still would be within a hundred feet of the, of the actual unit.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think that was everyone. Okay, good. Are you talking, I, I drove by it and visited the site and things, and it, it seemed like there's a lot of space there for the parking to be put in where you're describing between where the building kind of ends and the next building there. Okay, so with that, I am going to go ahead and open the public comment on this matter. So a reminder that speakers on this matter, we should keep their comments germane to the topic at hand and will be limited to three minutes. Mr. Reba?
Madam Chair, the first speaker is number identified as number eight-five-seven.
Okay. Number eight-five-seven, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Commissioner. I know this property somewhat, and the use requested seems appropriate. It's not a terribly attractive area for short-term rental use, but that's up to the, the property owners to decide. They'll price it accordingly. It seems appropriate use for that site. And I agree with the financials. Doing a short-term rental will probably financially allow them to make better improvements over long-term rentals. The, the empty lot they, or area that they refer to, unfortunately, that was formerly occupied by a beautiful eighteen-fifties home that was torn down overnight, but that's neither here nor there at this point. But the main question I have is tonight's action, this item and the previous item, is this specific to the applicants, or is this now a change for anyone in these two commercial zones? I'd like to clarify if it's for everyone after this, or I'd like to clarify if it's for everyone after this, or just these applicants. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next speaker is Caitlin Martin.
Go ahead, Caitlin, and unmute yourself.
Hi, my name's.
Oh, I think you muted yourself again one more time there.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Caitlin Martin. I live at 3041, right across the street from the unit. It's literally about 10 steps in front of my driveway. So basically, I do have a few things to touch on. First off, they claim that they've met the neighbors. They have not reached out to me or my family of seven, as well as my next door neighbor and her family of three. On top of that, the people that they're talking about, the two boys living in the unit are brothers. They're both disabled, and they have a service dog. As far as the individuals living in the front unit, it's a girl and her boyfriend, and their cats are outdoors. These people have lived here close to five years. They're not very informed on their tenants, first off. Second off, I have a huge issue having people live across the way and interchanging people every few nights, especially since I have five children. And they play out front, and there's been multiple times that I've been out front with my kids. And we have, the homeless population, as you know, is not very good up the road. It's actually really bad. And we've had them coming up down the street as is. But then to have a constant revolving door of new tenants across the way is rather terrifying. I've spoke with several other neighbors, and they think the same. As far as the property itself, yes, it does need to be fixed up. But they are also talking about kicking all of these individuals out of the units, giving them a two-month's notice. And in the middle of a pandemic, especially when trying to find a lease elsewhere, and it takes about a year to get onto a lease, they're literally kicking them out onto the streets so that they can make more money, putting a different situation in over there, like a hotel stay. And that scares the heck out of me, especially since we have so many kids here on this street. I am not exactly sure what their true thought process was, but they never reached out to any of us out here that live here. The previous landlord was a true slumlord. He bought the property, never fixed it up, and bought it really dirt cheap, sold it really high. And I guess the best way to say it is that this was a really not smart investment, I guess, because no one in this area truly thinks it's a smart idea. Me and my next door neighbor both are scared for our children now at this point, because we were never even given a hello. Our name is so-and-so, and these are our intentions. It was just thrown at us when we received a letter in the mail.
Smart, and you have 30 seconds?
It's unpredictable having random people put in that unit over there, in different units. Right now, we have people that have been there for many years, and at least we've built a relationship with them. And that way, we can trust them around our children. You have to understand, they're literally 10 feet in front of our driveway.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Deanna DePoli.
DePoli, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, my name's Deanna DePoli, Madam Chairman, and the commissions that are here, and also to the new owners. I live directly behind this property. I've lived here for about five years. This is a neighborhood. And a lot of people here, for one, do not want to see handicapped people that are on disability, Social Security, in small, yes, not great places, but that's what they can afford. And when you take them and put them to the streets, none of them drive. They all do their laundry down the street. They go to the grocery store next door. And you just throw them out for no apparent reason, other than to regentify our area to make money. This is what we call a neighborhood. And as the petition stated, you know, we have 30 signatures. I received the notice late. When I finally got home, I'm an international flight attendant. And I went and knocked door to door, and nobody wants this in our area. We have enough problems. We have a smoke shop. We have a liquor store. We have homelessness. We have issues with enough without bringing random people on nightly rentals, lower rentals at that. This is not going to be an upscale Airbnb. Let's put a bottle of wine and some muffins out. This is going to be a very low-income, high turnover, lower type of echelon of people that we don't need or want in this area at all. And I would like to propose that this is not accepted, and that they don't turn these people out. Also, to the Rosses, congratulations on your upcoming child, and I wish you the best. Thank you for, everyone for listening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ruth Michelson.
Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yeah, thank you for taking my call. I'm going to reiterate what some of the others have said. I, I don't really fear people who come to Airbnbs, but I do think we have to take care of our own first. This city and county has such a shortage of housing, especially on the affordable end of things. It, it's a crisis. I'm sure you're all aware, if you're on the planning commission. So I would lean in the direction of keeping what we have, rather than turning it into something for which we would entertain people who are coming from out of town. We really need to take care of our people first. Thank you.
Yeah.
Our next speaker is Curtis Crispin.
Hi, good evening.
Hello.
I, I've listened to some of these statements that are here, and, you know, it's apparent that, you know, some of these concerns are very much about their own well-being and what they regard to be their neighborhood. It's just that, at the same time, when you look at some of the, the commercial uses that are in this area, you can't help but feel that this is a part of Placerville that is in dire upneed of getting a rejuvenation of some investment. I, I think it's very apparent also that, you know, the Ross family is putting it out there that they're taking a risk on, on doing something to what was formerly owned by a slumlord. And, you know, as a result, they're, they're, I see them taking an investment into the community directly. And, you know, as the coffee shops and the, the dining can all be able to benefit in this pandemic, you know, there will be a net result that down the line will, will play as a, as a dividend to this segment of Placerville, which I, again, will tell you, you know, it, it, it needs some, some money put into it. And I, I really do see this investment as being with an intention of not just replicating gentrification. In fact, to the latter, I think that the intention is to uplift the city itself.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be John Doe.
Okay, Mr. Doe, when you're ready. Go ahead and unmute yourself. John Doe, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, we'll move on to the next speaker. Let's see, Casey H.
Casey, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, our next speaker will be John.
Are these all just attendees, or do they have their hands raised? I think that might be the issue.
Yeah, John does not have his hand raised.
Okay.
I think, Madam Chair, we have gone through all the speakers requesting to speak.
Great, thank you very much. And so with that, I will go ahead and close the public comment period and return the matter to commissioners for discussion and action. First, are there any further questions from the commissioners, to the staff, or the applicant about the application?
Madam Chair, I do have a question I neglected to ask earlier.
Okay.
Andrew and Pierre, clearly, a, a, a common theme from folks who are not in favor of this project deals with the loss of low-income housing. And I, there was nothing really in the staff report that spoke to that. And, and we, we do have a challenge, I know, in our arena numbers, et cetera, in, in meeting that. I, I would like to hear staff respond to that point. And, and before you do that, there was a, a previous question. The action on this item, as well as the previous action, is not simply just for these applicants. It's also to the entire zones, one being the Central Business District Zone, as well as the Highway Commercial Zone. So these actions that the, that we took tonight applies to both zones, I'm, I'm pretty sure. But if you could provide some insight on that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, Madam Chair, I'll take a shot at Commissioner Friend's questions, and probably then defer to Mr. Painter to follow up. But I think that's an important point to consider, is that these resolutions are not approving either of these temporary use permit applications. They're allowing for them to be considered as a temporary use permit application to be administratively approved by staff. So first of all, I want to make that clear. I think we had a previous speaker that touched on that again, for, I think, the second time, that we are looking at the, the Highway Commercial Zone as a whole. And as Mr. Painter pointed out in his staff report, these are what we would consider legal non-conforming uses. And so it is the goal or the objective of the city that, oh, slowly over time, these uses will convert then to uses that are by right or permitted within the Highway Commercial Zone, suitable for the traveling public, as opposed to being residential. But I think you raise a really good point, Commissioner Friend, that is a concern of staff, and that would be the loss of affordable housing. It's typically these kinds of units that provide for affordable housing for the lowest rung people that, they could be veterans, they could be people living on Social Security, a very, very fixed income. They can't afford anything more than this. Another, I think, a similar kind of unit would be, say, the, what we would call an SRO, or Single Room Occupancy, Ridgeview Manor, where you have very, very affordable units. Some of those are occupied by veterans, people on Social Security and the like. The same sort of situation we have here. Staff is, is not prepared to go into an involved analysis of the impact on affordable housing, but this is a loss of affordable housing units that the city does, does, is highly constrained in providing this, these kinds of housing units. So with that, I'll leave that to you. I think one of the findings is that that this is not detrimental. I think staff would also make that finding. And so it's not a guarantee that, even if you approve the resolution, that staff would have the ability to approve the temporary use permit at this particular location.
Thank you. Any other commissioner questions for the staffer applicant? Yes, checking, I mean, Commissioner Keen?
I have a more mundane concern. I'm sure we're going to have a farther-reaching discussion about affordable housing and short-term rentals. However, in this particular resolution, number 02, there's no provision for parking. And I was wondering if, let's see, either Mr. Painter or Mr. Rivas can explain to us why that was not included in this resolution like it was in the previous one?
I'll, I'll, I'll address that question. Yeah, your action under Resolution 21-01 put into and added this particular use as a use requiring a minimum of one parking stall. So the action taken in Resolution 21-01 added, added short-term rentals as, as a use requiring the minimum of one parking stall. There is no need to put it in this resolution. You previously adopted that action a few minutes ago.
But the, the other two sections are repeated for this resolution. So I guess that's, that's why I was confused. They, they are the same, except for the not stating that there's parking. And the, the reason I bring this up is that this is a bit of a constrained site, actually, for parking, whereas I think a lot of highway commercial may not be, but so you're saying that we've kind of incorporated it by reference?
No, the resolution you adopted a few minutes ago, in essence, added short-term rental uses as a use that requires now the provision of a minimum of one parking space. Had you not adopted that resolution, then I would have, staff would have recommended a modification to this resolution to add that language. It, it's not needed, because you've already declared that that particular use is required to have one stall.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
If Commissioner Keen is, is, will allow. Andrew, it, this concerns me a little bit, because it seems kind of messy. Because essentially, we have resolutions both dealing with the same activity, the same type of use, short-term rental. And in one resolution, parking is specifically required, and in another, it's not. And, and I think that they both should reinforce each other. And I would be a lot happier if we simply move, bring over the same parking language from the first one into the second one. And is there a reason why that would be a bad idea?
I'll chime in. No, there's no, there's no reason why you couldn't. I, I, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, you've already acted to declare, I'll repeat for the third time, you've already acted under the previous resolution that parking is now required for this use, which you've now defined as a short-term rental. So there's no need to repeat an action that you've already now added to city code under the, under your provisions, under, I think it's 1031, to allow you to declare uses that are subject to parking requirements. So you've already, you've already done that action. You don't need to necessarily do it now. But if it helps for clarity, certainly, we can, we can add it to the resolution.
I see. On the previous resolution, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth finding, if you will, whereas and that's where the parking space is required, so that's stated. But in the previous resolution, we didn't make statements about cooking sanitation, the other provisions that are now covered in Section 1, 2, and 3 in Resolution 02. Okay, I
No, I'm sorry, Commissioner Keen, the, the same language regarding Section 2, if you look at Section 2 in this resolution, I believe it's identical to Section 2 of the previous resolution, again, dealing with living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. It's the exact same, same language. I, I think, I think they're identical. Just for my fellow commissioners, my preference, and what I believe is cleaner, is for to have the, the language be the same, the activity is the same. I, I think down the road years, well, this may not apply if it's only a one-year thing, but just as a matter of principle, it seems messy to me to have them different. And, and since Andrew opined that it would not be detrimental to this resolution to have the parking language, my, my preference would be that we have the parking language.
Okay, would you like to make a motion around that?
Well, I'd like, I, I'd like to have a little bit more discussion.
Yeah.
And I, I'll defer to my fellow commissioners, because I have a few comments.
Okay, great, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Yes.
If I may. This, I want to direct this to, to Pierre. Is it my understanding that with this, David and Amber Ross will apply for a building permit to bring the property up to a standard? Where if they just stay where they are now with the low-cost, quote-unquote, low-cost housing, that they wouldn't have to do anything to the property?
That is correct, Commissioner List. The applicants don't have to do anything at the moment, is, if the use stays as it is. We consider a short-term vacation rental a commercial use. It is a lodging facility, as opposed to residential use. And so, that opens the door then for us to, to really look at the buildings. We would, we would cause that an inspection would be performed to ensure that they meet the minimum requirements of being a the, the fully independent dwelling unit. We would also look at party, parking automatically. We would require transient occupancy tax. We would require the applicants to get a business license. There's a number of different requirements that, that is not articulated in the resolution. It's not necessary to get into actually specifying all the requirements to engage in a vacation rental activity. But basically, this is just giving the staff the ability to consider that this type of use is similar to a hotel motel, lodging, if you will, to allow us, to allow staff to move forward with a temporary use permit, meaning it would only be good for one year. It would allow then for the city the ability to develop the more permanent regulatory ordinances then that would cover vacation rentals. I hope that answers your question.
In, in saying that, would it be possible for the Rosses to take one of the units and keep it as a, not as a short-term, but as a long-term rental?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the one way out of this for the handicapped couple or, or brothers would be that the Rosses rent them on a long-term basis versus a short-term basis. That, that may be part of the solution they would want to look at.
Yes, that is correct. And staff will be looking at that because I know there's some restrictions on actually causing tenants to move during this period of our COVID pandemic. You know, I can't really opine is exactly what that is, but we would look at that and we want to make sure that, that that there's not a severe impact on the tenant, on the tenants that are currently living there. City currently doesn't have any ordinances or any scheme for dealing with the for causing the dislocation of, of tenants. Many cities prohibited, or they have more involved regulatory schemes to reduce the impacts on dislocation of tenants. But we don't have that now, and that's something we would be looking at in the future.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just, if I may, a question for staff. And, and I can't believe I don't know the answer to this question. I should. A temporary use permit, does that come to commission or is that administrative?
That's administrative permit, Commissioner Friend. Staff would approve it. Subject to appeal, if we denied it, and then it would go to the commission.
But the, but the public could not appeal it if you granted it.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Yes, Mr. Painter.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair Lopper. I, I'll, I'll take another crack at, at the resolution. And I, I realize that the commission, you commissioners, don't always get resolutions in front of you for consideration and adoption. Perhaps that's the confusion. I, I'll try to summarize. A resolution has a component in it, and one of the components is at the very end of both of these resolutions. After the wherethes, under the section items, is where it, it's almost as, as if you are under a typical staff reports that I prepare for you, or Pierre prepares for you, where we recommend certain actions be taken. So I would, I would equate those sections as separate actions. So, section one, section two, and section three are separate actions under one resolution that gets adopted. If, if that helps you. So, maybe, maybe it doesn't.
May I ask a question, Andrew?
Sure.
So, in the first resolution, we have an additional section four, again, which speaks specifically to the parking component. So why, why wouldn't that specific section four, which is the actionable component of the resolution, going based upon what you just described, why wouldn't we have that section four also appear in the second resolution?
Because it's an action that you completed and filed and agreed to and approved. It doesn't, it doesn't need to be repeated.
Then why does section two need to be in there? In the second resolution?
That's in there to, at one point, we weren't sure whether the first resolution would be adopted. So, for context, that was put in there. Is it needed? Perhaps it isn't, under, under your, under your question.
All right, with that, with that logic, with that logic, if you weren't sure we were going to adopt the first one, wouldn't you have needed section four in the second one, too?
Perhaps.
Okay, so.
It, it, it's your resolution. You could choose to, to withdraw, remove, as you see fit.
I, I appreciate that very much. Thank you. Madam Chair, I have a few comments on, on the matter, if no other commissioners have comments at this point. So, so in, in, and this is trying to, this is trying to bring everything together in, in this application. It certainly is, is a, a lot more complicated than the previous short-term rental resolution that we considered, in, in my view. But at the same time, this also kind of reminds me of, of the formula business issues that we've dealt with, and, and the fact being that this is in a highway commercial zone. The use that's being requested is completely compatible with this zoning. The applicants frankly could apply to raise these two buildings and put in a hotel. And, and we are in real need of a hotel. And so, yeah, I'm looking at my scale here. The loss of, of, of affordable housing is a concern. I'm, and I, I have to say it right up front, it's a concern, as is eviction, frankly. Let's, let's call it what it is. It would have to be an eviction. But these things happen when properties are improved and change hands and so on and so forth. That is the risk of being a tenant. That, that's a harsh reality. And I'm not sure, there, there's, there's no solution that we can impose upon the applicants. The applicants do not own that burden. Okay, we can't force that burden upon them. So we have the quality of the neighborhood, a lot of the concerns from, from the neighborhood. I have to say, I mean, our conjecture, right, that, that we're going to get the low-income, scuzzy, sleazy, whatever kind of people. I'm, I'm not certain that's going to be the case, particularly with the improvements that are, that are being projected. That's on one side of the scale, the loss of the income, of, of the affordable housing, and then impact on the neighborhood. And then, on the other side of the scale, first and foremost, in, in my views, we have the, the private property rights. They own this property. What they're trying to do, would like to do, is within their right to pursue. And, and there's nothing wrong with it. And, and there's nothing evil in, in what they're trying to do. We do need lodging. You know, we need affordable housing on one side of the scale. We need lodging on the other side of the scale. We, we, we really do. And they're going to improve the property. So, I'm, I'm inclined, I'm, I'm inclined to approve the request. And, and, you know, do I guess staff will provide at some point. They'll, they'll take a look at the whole affordable housing piece, but we can't lay that burden at the feet of, of, of these folks, in my view. That, that's, that's our responsibility. The city's responsible to try to meet, meet that need. So, I, I'm in favor of the request as it stands right now. With the addition of the parking language, of course.
Any other commissioners? Yes, Michael?
I have some comment. So, you know, I do see the Highway Commercial Zone as being significantly different than the Central Business District. I want to think one of these big differences is these compatible, non-conforming residential uses. When looking at our language in ordinance ten dash four dash seven on issuing special temporary use permits, it says that there will not be any detrimental in any way to the surrounding properties or the community. I think when you're looking at this, I do think, you know, it could result in some detrimental impacts to our community by displacing people out of Placerville, could lead to an increase in homelessness. It could create noise and traffic and crime for the surrounding rental properties. So in my view of this, looking at it as a item related to temporary use permits, I don't think issuing a temporary use permit is the appropriate mechanism. I think that there are alternatives available to the applicant. They have a use by right if they were to construct two additional units and make this a motel, in which case they would then also have requirements on twenty-four-seven staffing, which I do think would address some of the detrimental impacts to the surrounding residential uses. So my look at this is that I, I do see benefits to it in the long term. I think the Highway Commercial Zone is intended to you know, be applicable to our traveling public. But I don't think that it should be addressed under a temporary use permit. I think that it should be addressed under changes to zoning ordinances. And I do realize that then puts the applicant in a position where they're either waiting for us to change our zoning ordinances, or they are, you know, taking an alternative path to do something that is allowed by right, which is hotels and motels, and meeting the requirements to be a hotel or a motel. So that's my views on this issue.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts? Yes, Commissioner Kenny. I keep calling you Chair.
This is just such a difficult instance compared to what we had before, which was much easier for us to see the path forward because of the affordable housing crisis that we have in our town and the homelessness that we're all, we're aware of of those impacts. And I think, you know, Commissioner Friend really put it quite well. I, I think that this is a, a good use of, of the property. It allows us to improve something that has become derelict over time, neglected. It is a way to make it affordable to the new property owners and otherwise they may not be able to do, or be able to afford to do any improvements to the structure without this potential income stream. The turnover in renters and the complaints, you know, Michael Friend said that those are conjecture. And I, you know, I, I think I have to agree with that. And also, under the temporary use permit, if this becomes a nuisance, that is also and staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, i- if there are a lot of complaints about noise and, and, and other things, that the city can then not renew the use permit. So that is something for the applicants to keep in mind, that if this becomes a problem, then they may have to find a different, a different tenants, even though they invest in the improvements. And as I look across the city, in the staff report, it says that there are about fifty-one units in the Highway Commercial Zone that are, are similar to what we're looking at right this moment. And when you look at our need for both hotel motel space and our need for affordable housing, even if we went to, by approving this, we're allowing other units in a Highway Commercial Zone to approach the city and apply for a special temporary use permit. But fifty-one units, one where the other is not going to take care of either problem. We still are going to need more motel rooms. We certainly need to address our affordable housing problem on, on a larger scale. And so the, since this is, we are looking toward the future, the, the city's going to have an ordinance that regulates short-term rentals throughout the city. And I, I think now it's, it's starting to take a bit more of importance now that we've had a couple of applications. We're getting over COVID, and hopefully we can get that in place. And we have just a, a better structure so that we know how many, and, and what our true impact is on the city as a whole. So, you know, Commissioner Godberg, I, I really sympathize. You, you put up, hit, hit the nail on the head about the affordable housing. And this is where I struggled with it. But listening to, you know, the applicants and the my, the other commissioners, I, I agree with Commissioner Friend, I, I think this really is a good use. It's a, an opportunity to get an improvement on this property that it really is in dire need of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to echo your, your thoughts a little bit, I, I tend to agree and appreciate all of the things that you all have said. And again, it is a tricky thing because of, you know, the current use and things. But I think as a whole, when we look at approving them for the highway, the Highway Commercial Zone, and with the last discussion that we had, that this kind of fits in line with those goals, while it may miss some of the other goals the city has. And I tend to agree, I would agree that adding the parking information to the resolution would just be not hurtful at all. So, I'd be inclined to do that as well. Does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion on this topic?
Madam Chair, I have one more question for staff, if I might. Andrew, is, is, are the wherethes a kind of a place for, for findings by the commission?
Yes.
Okay. Then, then I would be prepared to make a motion, Madam Chair. I, I would move that we adopt Resolution number twenty dash twenty-one zero-two, introducing the staff report as part of the public record, accepting the resolution as written with the following changes. After the, let me see, hold on, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. After the seventh whereas, we add another whereas that says, whereas the commission finds the request by property owners, David Ross and Amber Ross, to likely result in improvement of the property, semicolon, and and then fly in wherever staff thinks it's appropriate. The parking language, the whereas from, from the Resolution twenty, twenty-one dash oh-one, that would been, that would have been the fifth whereas regarding parking. And then also, section four regarding parking to the appropriate areas on this resolution. I hope that's clear. That's my motion.
That was a question.
Just a quick question, Michael, or can I ask a question right now?
We need a second.
First, do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. List will second. I just have a question about stating that they're going to improve the property and what that means by inserting it into it and what it requires of them.
Oh, no, I, I said, whereas, whereas the commission finds that the request is likely to result in improvement of the property. So that, that was a finding, because I, I do believe what's been presented to us is likely. And so I want that as a finding. And frankly, I want that in there because this will be an, an appealable action, and it might be appealed. So if it's appealed to council, I want to give the council something for the basis of our decision.
Absolutely. I definitely missed you say to result in, will likely result in. That makes a lot more sense. Okay.
Now, Madam Chair, if staff can make a comment on that. Staff, I don't think has an issue regarding adding the parking, but staff does have a potential issue with being specific to this application, since this application specifically is not for you. And And I would say you could assume that it's more than likely that the property is going to be improved. However, that's highly speculative and it's too specific for the item at hand. What you're looking at is more of, you're looking at the, the highway commercial zone district as a whole. You make the finding that the Ross's application triggered this item to be brought before you by staff because staff lacked the authority to even consider a temporary use permit for a vacation rental. But I would, I would highly recommend that the commission not add findings that are specific to this case because the application for the temporary use permit is not before us.
So Pierre, thank you, thank you for that because I, I really struggled with that very issue, realizing that on the one hand, we, we talk about and we're dealing with this specific piece of property. At the same time, this resolution is for the entire highway commercial zone, including that's on the, that, that is on the west end of town. Okay, so I, I get that and, and I understand what you're saying. So then, back to my concern about giving council a basis for why we approve this in the event of an appeal. Is there someplace where it's appropriate to do that? Or do they just use this video record as the reason? That, that, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for because often we make findings, right? To support whatever our decision is. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, so that, that, that is correct. I'm, I'm sure any council member, members of the public will be privy to this video. But again, I think you need to take, the typical analogy is a more of a 50,000 elevation view of allowing temporary use permits for vacation rentals in the highway commercial zone as opposed to getting really deep into the weeds specifically to David and Amber Ross's application, which this will authorize them to submit a temporary use application to staff. We will then analyze it. Staff may not approve it. It's, it's no guarantee, but it authorizes us the ability to accept and consider such an application.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I'm, I'm happy to modify my motion withdrawing the whereas I added with regards to the likelihood of improvement of the property. And I'm, I'm hoping that Commissioner List will accept that amendment.
I accept it.
Commissioner Kinney, did you have a question?
I did. I just wondered if it's, it's moot now since it's been pulled. But if you added that as a finding, would it put a burden on a subsequent applicant that you always have to improve the property? So that was my concern, but I appreciate you withdrawing that.
Yes, Mr. Painter.
Yeah, I, I have a question about the motion as well. And Michael, this, this is to you. Did you, my understanding of, yeah, you, you made the whereas related to the improvement to the property. But did you also add a, a whereas regarding the parking or was it?
Yes, I grabbed, I, the whereas that appeared in the first, whereas number five that appeared in the first resolution, I'd like the same language.
I see.
In this one. And then section four that appeared in the first resolution, I'd like that to appear in this one.
Okay, as verbatim, is that, was that the intent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so just to clarify, the motion is to approve the resolution with the addition of the parking specifications that have been approved via zoning interpretation twenty-one oh-one. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Painter, can you call Roll?
I, I'd like to make one final comment.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
All right, um, so I just wanted to point out our, you know, temporary use permit ordinance doesn't say that if the positive impacts outweigh the detrimental ones or the use is more in line with the general plan, that we can issue a temporary use permit. What it says is the temporary use shall not be detrimental in any way. So I just wanted to point that out before we vote.
But I think as staff has pointed out, this is not a temporary use request at this time. Staff may not approve their request. This is simply a modification for the highway commercial zone.
Yeah, I guess I would just add to that, you know, my comments are related to temporary use permits being issued in the highway commercial zone and that I see those as being detrimental impacts to the community.
If there's, is there any further discussion?
Call the question.
Okay, can you go ahead and call Roll, Mr. Painter?
Member Friend.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gottberg.
No.
Amber Kinney. Chair Lepper.
Aye.
Member List.
Aye.
I think Chris might have just missed you. Did you want to vote Chris or?
I'm sorry, did you not hear my vote?
No, we didn't hear it.
Not here, no.
I'm sorry.
Aye, aye, thank you.
Thank you. So the resolution does pass four to one with Vice Chair Gottberg voting no. A reminder that all, all decisions by Planning Commission are appealable within a 10-day calendar period to City Hall. Okay, so with that, we can move to our next public hearing. That will be item six on our agenda, seven-five-five-three Green Valley Road, SPR twenty dash zero-five, a review for Gear Tooth Ale Works. Mr. Painter, may we have the report, please?
Yes, the, tonight's project, again, site plan review twenty dash zero-five. It's a project site located at seven-five-five-three Green Valley Road, approximately 175 feet southwest of the intersection of Green Valley Road and Placerville Drive. The site parcel, as well as the adjoining parcels to the north and south, were established in the late 1970s. The building, parking and access improvements on these lots were constructed soon after. The request before you tonight is a site plan review request involving the change of building occupancy and involving the reuse and repurposing of an existing thirty, 3,200 square foot building and parking area from a professional business occupancy to a restaurant and brewery use, eating and drinking establishment, as we call it in, in our Zone Code, with interior seating for 48. This business is to be called the Gear Tooth Ale Works. Site improvements also include the addition of outdoor seating area for an additional seating for a total capacity of 72 seats. They're also proposing exterior changes, adding a decorative fencing and gate to screen the, the outdoor seating area. They also plan to smoke meat for food service prep and, and sale on the site as well as barbecue. Also, new mechanical equipment and a screen fence will be added to the site and that'll be on the southern, southern elevation, south elevation of the building. As well as a new loading berth will be installed in the parking area adjacent to the building. New parking spaces will be added on the adjacent seven-five-three-three Green Valley Road parcel to accommodate parking requirements for not only the Gear Tooth Ale Works business, but also those of the retail service, retail business and the, the dog training businesses that are on it, the adjoining parcels with addresses of seven-five-three-three and seven-five-five-nine Green Valley Road. There are no physical barriers between these parcels, once again, because they were established and, and constructed on at approximately the same time. And without barriers, it allows vehicles and pedestrians to travel easily between the applicant parcel at seven-five-five-three Green Valley Road that sits between, again, the seven-five-three-three and seven-five-five-nine. There is a driveway encroachment serving each of these lots to Green Valley Road, which is to the east. The applicants are proposing a reciprocal parking agreement that will cover all three of these parcels. And that will accomplish the parking needs for all onsite existing uses as well as the proposed use before you this evening. Specifically, this, this item is before you because whenever there's a change of occupancy involving additional density or use on the property, it triggers site plan review under section ten-four-nine of City Code. And so that, that is the purpose of tonight's item. The land use and zone classification is commercial. Commercial zone permits eating and drinking establishments. The proposed decorative and screen fencing and outdoor seating furniture are consistent with the site plan review design criteria. The reciprocal parking agreement allows for the proposed use to meet its parking demands and loading requirements under City Code, as I mentioned. Although detailed sign information was not provided, only the proposed location of, of the business identification wall sign, which is provided on sheet G one point one of the applicant's middle package. Staff has been informed by the property owner's representative that the three parcels intend to submit very soon a master sign plan, which will be utilized on all three parcels. A master sign plan would become and would come before the planning commission for approval and would be binding upon, on future tenant businesses going forward on the site. There are no changes proposed by the applicant or property owner of the existing landscaping along Green Valley Road and the parking area for the site. The existing landscaping is depicted on sheet G one point two of the applicant's middle package. A summary of the expected business operations for Gear Tooth Ale Works is provided on page four of the staff report. And that includes information about onsite food and drink production, hours of operation, licensing requirements both at the city and state level, brewing operation details, including odors from that operation and solid and garbage waste removal. As of the preparation of the packets and distribute to the planning commission, no public comment has been received as of, as of this moment. Staff believes the, the commission can make the findings that the request meets the requirements to qualify as an infill development project categorical exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. Staff also finds that the proposed decorative and screen fencing meet the style of existing fencing onsite are made of durable and low maintenance materials. And in the case of the screen fence, will adequately screen the mechanical, mechanical equipment from public view, which once again is consistent with the site plan review criteria. The site does not contain accommodations for bicycle users. However, as indicated in the staff report, the commission has in the recent past required a bicycle rack be installed for uses of this type. And staff has, is recommending that this particular use also provide a bicycle rack for patrons and employees. As mentioned just a few minutes ago, no changes are proposed to the existing landscaping. If this component is okay with the commission, staff has added a condition consistent with the site plan review design criteria, which would require the execution recording of the landscape maintenance agreement to, to ensure the continued maintenance of the landscaping in the future. Due to these characteristics, proposed improvements and as conditioned, the request would meet the site plan review design criteria under City Code. I, I mentioned earlier about the, the reciprocal parking agreement. Staff has also added that as a condition of approval to make sure and provide proof that that is indeed executed and recorded. So that is a condition requested by staff this evening. Another condition of note is site, excuse me, street frontage improvement agreements. The staff report goes into a little detail about why that is required, it's code requirement. However, due to the, the existing gaps that the city has in those street frontage improvements along Green Valley Road at this time and the lack of a plan line for where curb gutter and sidewalk would be appropriate at this time, staff is not recommending that the construction of those improvements be done with this request, but that a landscape, excuse me, a street frontage improvement agreement be recorded, which would defer those requirements to install those improvements at a time when we have connectivity to, to complete the segment of sidewalk curb and gutter from basically Easy Street on the north end down to Mallard Lane. Staff recommends the commission conditionally approve the request by taking the action beginning on page nine, continuing on page tandem staff's report and subject to the conditions of approval provided in attachment B of the staff report. Commission's action to remind the commission and members of the public that the commission's action tonight to approve, conditionally approve or to deny the request may be appealed to City Council within 10 calendar days. Chair Lepper and commission members, the applicant representatives of the applicant's development team and those from Gear Tooth Ale Works, as well as the property owner, were invited and I believe all are on the call tonight and may want to speak to you regarding this item. And Chair Lepper, that concludes my staff report.
Fantastic, thank you. Do any commissioners have questions for staff on the initial report rundown?
I have a couple of questions, Madam Chair. So Andrew, with regard to the signage, the, there's a, there's a sign as proposed. There wasn't any real description in terms of how it's lit or if it's just painted on or, or whatever it is. So it'd be nice to have a little bit more detail about what they're proposing to put up there. Also, you talk about the property manager. You, there's been some discussions about putting up a sign representing all the businesses. Is that supposed to be a monument sign or what are we talking about?
No, it's, it's a sign plan for all three parcels. So there'll be a, a design aesthetic and a design plan as to, will dictate where tenants can put signage on the building, what the signs would look like, not the signed copy, because individual tenants, of course, are going to have their own shingle, so to speak, but the overall design aesthetic. The commission recently did this, I think in the last couple of years, when the Herrick Building came back before you for some finalization of some items. One of the outstanding things that needed to be done was a sign package for future tenants of the site. So what this plan would do would, would memorialize what signage would be for not only this, the applicant location this evening, but also for the parcels, both north and south. So at seven-five-three-three and seven-five-five-nine, there would be one design aesthetic with particular locations where tenants could put sign and so that would come before you. So you would approve a sign package for all three lots. So at this point, you are correct, the staff report does, and the information provided by the applicant does not provide much detail other than the concept of where the sign would be located. I will tell you though, that there are external lamps that are on the wall of that particular location. So I imagine that the, the business owner and the property owner would, would allow the reuse of those, those exterior light fixtures to, to light up any signage, but hopefully that answers.
So fair enough and, and kind of on that, am I to understand then that the applicant as a tenant in that complex is, is then bound by what the property manager is putting together? So, because they have so many square feet of signage that they'd be allowed, right? Based upon how much street frontage they have. But in this case, they, they can't do that because the property manager's working on a, a master sign plan. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, that's a good summary. So, so yes, the, the sign plan will dictate, not to exceed the city maximum standards, but
Sure.
Yeah, the, the sign plan for these three buildings, this, I believe what they're going to call Grandpa's Corners. I think that's, that'll be the name of the, the whole, the whole three buildings. So yeah, the, the, the concept there would, would dictate how much sign area that individual tenant or tenants in the other buildings may have. So it'll be up to them to explain that to the planning commission when they submit their application. And I, I think what your question is leading to is yes, there might be, there might be provisions to allow a tenant with more floor area to have larger signage. So that's certainly something they could, they could present to you.
Well, I'm just, I'm simply saying that, that we approve signage and it sounds like we've got this concept sign here, which is fine. And then at some later date, there's going to be a sign plan that's going to come back to, to commission. I just want to make sure there's not some sort of backdoor pathway that signage pops up that we haven't had a chance to look at. That, that's really where I'm at. Excuse me, the, the next question I have is I noticed there's no, there's no lighting plan or assessment for the property. And then there's the, there's the illusion, not an illusion as in a hidden, a, a magic guy, allude to, it's alluded to that they'll have through the parking agreement, access to a lot more parking space that are probably assigned presently to some of the other businesses, which, which 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 makes perfect sense, given the hours of operation of this business. I can see that's compatible. Although I concur with staff completely, we need to see that. But some of these these sites, particularly on on the west southwest end, I can see clearly being in the dark. And I'm just wondering if we need a a lighting plan assessment that we often get with a lot of applications, and there's nothing here with this one.
To my, to my understanding, the applicant was not, is not proposing exterior lighting in addition to perhaps what the building may already have up there. So no, they did not address the parking illumination in their plans submittal to the planning staff.
Okay. And then the last thing, it's more of a comment than a question. They talk about byproducts of brewing operations and it was all straightforward. The one element that I guess EID is going to have to comment on, because does EA I EID manage city sewer?
No, they
Who manages that public work?
That part of town is under the water purveyor. They are the water purveyor for that part of Placerville, but no, the that the city sewer system, they would be utilizing the city sewer system.
Okay, because I presume that the other, the other waste generation that comes out of brewing operation is of course caustic and other chemicals. And also from time to time, large dumps of yeast, which can wreak havoc on the water treatment plant. And so if Public Works is not aware of that, or they probably are with the old Placerville Brewing Company, I'll just bring that to staff's attention. You can just kind of put a bug in their ear. Madam Chair, and that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any other commissioners have questions for staff? Yes, Mr. King.
I'm concerned about parking once again. And so I guess Michael had some really great points about the application, but I'm not familiar with this reciprocal agreement. And let's see, it's stipulation number twelve in our on page, let's see, I'm sorry. But what I'm getting at is, how can we be assured that they are going to put in the thirteen additional parking stalls? I I'm not seeing that on the draft reciprocal parking agreement. And also, I know from that side, I have been a customer of the K nine competition. And I recall on that southwest side that there is a fence that keeps you from going back there. And also, there's a steep upslope off of Debbie Lane, as I recall from the site when I've been there. So my question for you, Mr. Painter, is can we require that under item number twelve, where we talk about this reciprocal parking agreement? Or is there somewhere else, because it's included by reference in their plan, that they will actually put in those additional spots?
Yeah, their site plan, which the reference number is G one point one, shows the location of the stalls.
Okay, so that that is our assurance that they will be placed. Okay.
They would need to to complete the work as planned or as modified by the commission.
Okay.
You you as a commission could certainly reinforce that with specific language if if you feel it's necessary. The the reciprocal agreement, I've read a draft of it and from from their property manager. And what it what it will do, it will allow all three parcels and the tenants, the customers, they will be able to park anywhere. So those parking spaces will be available when the businesses are open. So the intent is because of the there, there is no physical barrier between the three lots. With the exception of the fence, you didn't mention the fence and gate. That question did come up, or that not concerned, but but that issue was raised by the property manager Anne McQuillan. And I informed her that those stalls need to be made available when those businesses are open. So it will be incumbent upon that property manager to ensure that. Now, clearly, there could be situation in times and days when maybe some of those businesses are closed and or the dog training center is not in operation or has limited hours. And I believe from the 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 business operation perspective from the applicant, they at least initially have have shown in their applicant submittal package some hours of operation that they intend to to operate, of course, will fluctuate as the business grows. They may want to have more days open. So what this agreement will do is will ensure from staff's perspective that the required parking can be met with this agreement and it'll be recorded. So so each individual property owner, it's an insurance that 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 will remain available. Now, if that agreement were to be terminated at some time in the future, then it certainly would allow the city to re reenter this site plan review. And you know, worst case scenario, we could limit occupancy to square footage that on a worst case scenario, that that the property owner would have parking to meet that demand. That's rather extreme. Are you are you following what I'm what I'm saying? Yeah.
I think you're explaining it quite well, Andrew. Appreciate that. And so what we're doing is assuring at the outset that there is sufficient parking based on the occupancy that we have for these buildings. But it is then the responsibility of the property manager, the business owners to work among themselves if there are any issues. But it's the city's responsibility to make sure that upon approval of this, that there are a certain number of parking spots available and that that those are sufficient and accessible to patrons of any of the three buildings. Okay.
Yeah, to follow up, a- a- as you're aware, you know, uses change. I mean, here clearly we have an applicant who wants to change the occupancy of the building. Who's to say that maybe seven five five nine, the building to the north, the uses that are in there may change. The parking regulations and requirements may may also be altered because of that physical use. So another evaluation would need to be done about about that tenant or tenants, plural. So yeah, we realize that this is kind of a uh, yeah, it's static in the sense that that based on the uses that we know of right now. And that's really what we're what we're evaluating. It's hard for us to speculate what a future tenant might be. So at this point, staff is comfortable with they meet the minimum parking requirements for the uses that we know of on in these three buildings, if that if that's helpful.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I ask just kind of a quick follow up question on parking? Andrew, could you tell me, just taking the 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 business by itself, forget the reciprocal, what is the parking need?
Eighteen stalls.
Eighteen stalls. And they have, it looks like they have thirteen in front of their businesses, and they they need that additional six or five or six.
Yeah, due to the fact that the loading berth is required for this occupancy and really any other commercial occupancy, some of those stalls that may be striped today, if you were to go out to the site, would be removed.
Yeah, thank you.
It really necessitates this this reciprocal agreement. And we have a willing property owner who understands, you know, I think the importance of of having these these businesses kind of blend together and and work, so.
Any other questions? I just have one small point on a type thing. It says six forty Main Street on the location on page one.
All right.
No, no worries. Just before we put it into the record. But with that, seeing no more questions for staff, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the applicant for to speak to their application. Not sure which one of you, Mr. Alvarez, Ms. Collins, Mr. Gans. I think you're still muted, Mr. Alvarez, if you're talking. We do.
Okay. So do you use the phone because I have some little connection here, so I can't hear you guys very well. I put you on speakerphone. Anyway, we really don't have any questions for you all. Really, we just wanted to make sure that Andrew answered the question satisfactorily. If there's anything else that the that the commission or the panel here needs, you know, us to further elaborate on, you know, we're here to answer those questions. I think Jake Gans is ve- very excited. He's he's the owner that's joined us here. My colleague Kerry Collins, who prepared the the packages here as well. So if there's any questions, you know, we're 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 here to to answer this. But really, we read the conditions of approval. I heard some of the questions that were answered. We we did provide the additional parking. We have every intention of fulfilling the obligation. Site lighting, you know, really, we would would address that in construction documentation, but it's all existing. So, you know, we, you know, don't have any plans to further do that in this building. The building department or or you guys decide us, you want us to do that. I wanted to make one comment about the signage. The signage wasn't just pulled out of the air. Actually, the the adjacent properties currently have signage. The existing buildings did have, as Andrew pointed out, some existing wall wall lights. There are decorative wall lights that kind of look like art lights, if you will. They they kind of swoop around like with a gooseneck. And they're on all three buildings. And the signage was always intended to be in those gables. And that's what we did. We put those in the same, in fact, if you look at the site carefully and visiting, where we strategically place Gear Tooth Airworks is signed. It was right exactly where the adjacent neighbors were. So we tried to be consistent with everything on the site because we, you know, really excited about having this project coming. So that's pretty much it. You know, really want to leave the questions open for you all.
Fantastic. Well, thank you very much. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment on this topic. A reminder that speakers
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, so I just have a question to applicant.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes. Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, Mr. Alvarez, thank you for that information. So just to be clear, the 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 sign is going to have exterior illumination. You're going to utilize the existing goosenecks to provide the illumination.
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, as as that as Mr. Painter pointed out, I think the landlord and property owner are looking into doing a whole sign, a revised refresh sign program, which should obviously go through, you know, this commission for approval. For now, we wanted to get our project moving forward. We're just trying to follow suit which is consistent with the adjacent properties.
So then the other question I have with regards to some exterior lighting, and and this is even low to the ground kind of lighting, because the the business, by the nature of the business, will be open later hours than the the neighboring businesses. Although the K nine, I can't recall when we approved this, if they're open later in the evening. But they're, they have an access off of Debbie Lane parking, which I don't think is fits in with your folks in terms of the reciprocal. I wouldn't see slots sixty eight through fifty six as being part of the reciprocal. Folks wouldn't use it because it comes off of Debbie Lane. But the other spots in front of your building and the and the three that are are the K nine there, the warehouse building is one I'm talking about. But right on the front on Green Valley Road, it seems to me that that parking lot, at least the the parking stalls that are close to Green Valley Road might might benefit with from some some low low lighting or or foot level lighting in the landscaping areas. So I'd like you to give, and those could be solar lights, so it doesn't have to be anything elaborate. But I think some sort of lighting would probably be appropriate, particularly, you know, when it's dark in in the winter time. So I I'd like to see that. That's all I have.
Okay, I I I don't think anybody'd be opposed to that. Again, as long as you're allowing us to use potentially solar, now we don't have to dig up the existing landscaping and things of that nature. And and, you know, if this is what the the will get us through this level, included in the conditions of approval, and we'll we'll make it happen. We are in for a building permit concurrently. We don't have those. But, you know, we know that we have to comply with conditions of approval and we're prepared to do anything within reason.
Thank you. That's all my questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, and apologies for moving on. Any other questions for commissioners for the applicants?
Mr. Alvarez. Seven seven five Baywood Drive, is that in Placerville, the owner of the property? Where's the owner of property live? Why don't we don't have a town?
The the owner of the property is not in Placerville. The tenant is, the property managers live in Placerville. But I don't believe the owner, the owner is.
Your, yeah, your applicant left that off. I like I like to know where he lives. Not that I'm going to send him anything, but I just would like to know that that it is an out of town owner. The other thing
Yeah, I I don't have, I don't have the owner. I have his business address. He is on the call. If you could unmute John, I don't know if you have the ability to do that. You can ask him yourself. J O N is on the call. And if you could give him the ability to speak, I'm sure he could tell us where he lives. We're happy to share that with you, but I can tell you where his business is. Would you like to know, Mr. List?
For a mailing address, you have to have a city. Okay, moving on.
Commissioner List, if I may, I'm looking at the environmental information form. And I see seven seven five Baywood Drive, suite three eighteen, Placerville, California.
No, there is no Placerville, California on mine.
Oh, on the environmental form.
It's on the first page of the plan set. It is Petaluma, California is what's listed on the plan set. I had, I had the same question, Mr. List.
Okay, my my point is that the it wasn't on the application.
Right.
Moving on. In the environmental mental information form, number twenty, just above that, above seventeen, says, are the following items applicable to the project or its effects? And number twenty says significant amounts of solid waste or litter. In the process of producing alcohol, you end up with mash. You state that someplace, okay?
Right.
Have, are you in contact with a local farmer that is going to take that?
Uh, yes, I'm going to defer that question to Mr. Gans. Jake Gans is the is the proprietor that will be running the business, and he has already contacted folks. Jay, would you like to, can you unmute and tell the folks what investigation you've done and what kind of what you're planning to do with your with your waste?
We we do plan on contacting, we have not contacted a farmer yet, but we will be doing that. And yeah, I know we actually had at least one agricultural farmer did reach out to us and say he would be interested in it, but this was some time ago. But we we, I'm very confident that we can line something up. And for both hop debris and as well as our mash that are spent grades.
Okay, my question, my question to you is that your application says, no, there isn't a change. Yet there is a change. Significant amount of solid waste, and you say no, yet in reality, you are creating a significant amount compared to what the building has produced in the past. See what I'm saying?
Yes.
It should have been a yes, and it should have been explained, okay?
Yeah.
Number twenty one, dust, ash, smoke, fumes, or odors in the vicinity. You were planning on smoking meats.
Yes.
Okay. Have you had any contact with neighbors on on the effect that will have on them?
No, we have not, although
And once again, and once again, that was marked no. And in reality, if you're going to smoke meat, you're going to, you're going to create a certain amount of of odor.
Yeah, Jay, can I, can I, would you mind me fielding this one, Jay? Because we kind of discussed it earlier today, and I kind of have your, you know, we discussed. So so, you know, the, you know, basically Jay is So so, you know, the, you know, basically Jay is going to get what's equivalent to a Traeger. I would guess that at least two or three of you in the audience have a Traeger grill. We are going to use a pellet. He's going to use a a pellet driven smoker, not a big log kind of wood smoker that's going to be generating. So it's no different than, you know, the way we see it, and we would be happy to provide specifications for the unit that he's going to purchase. But it's basically a pellet unit, and it's no more, it's no different than the Traeger that I personally have one, and I'm sure some of you do. And so, you know, we didn't think, we kind of see that as a barbecue. He used the word smoker because they are going to be, you know, obviously doing barbecue and because they want to use something like that. We did investigate using a Traeger, but they're not, they don't make them large enough for commercial use. So but it still is a probably, you know, no different than, again, the neighbors would probably have Traegers.
And if you were a neighbor and had to smell that all the time, you may have a question. Okay, that's enough on that. We'll move on. Are you aware that Placerville Brewing Company and Jack Russell Brewing Company both have gone out of business in the last few months?
Is that to me? Is that to me?
Yeah, Jay, that'd be to you.
Yes. Yes, we are aware of that. I think one of the things we are going to do to make sure we have a viable operation is we're going to promote to-go food, which will, which as as a barbecue restaurant, I think to-go food will be highly appreciated. We 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 kind of see things post pandemic changing a bit, that maybe people aren't going to be visiting restaurants and breweries like they used to do. So we have, we're looking into that as, you know, to go being a big, a big point, not just only the food, but also our beer as well. We will, we've already purchased a crawler machine, which will allow us to to package our beer in 32 ounce cans for to-go use. We also currently produce beer in cans. So we expect to have a robust business for both onsite and offsite. And the two, I think, will complement each other.
Okay, no other questions?
Commissioner List? Any other questions from commissioners to the applicants?
Just for Commissioner List, item 25 in that application. The hazardous inflammable substances also should have been checked, yes, because caustic acids, oxygen, and other items are common in brew houses. So that probably should have been a yes as well.
Question to staff about those. Would changing those three in theory topic choices impact the environmental information and the staff report?
Not from staff's perspective, but if the condition feels warrant, feels warranted, they could condition the project accordingly to modify that. It is their application form, though they're attesting to it. But if you're asking me or asking staff, is the odor potential from a smoker barbecue possible? Yes. Could it impact neighboring uses? Perhaps it could. I I'm not familiar with the Traeger model or smoker. However, I know in general that smokers have the ability to put scrubbers on them to minimize the release of that type of potential dispersal of of smoke. And so that that's an option for the commission.
I could just clarify one thing on that as well. This is a pellet smoker, so it's not, we're not going to be putting big chunks of oak into a smoker. So pellet smokers tend to be a lot more efficient in the way they produce smoke. So I don't see that, you know, we're not, we're not going to be having a bonfire type type situation every night. And more than likely, the smoke will be, we'll be smoking earlier in the day. And then by, you know, mid to late afternoon, I would think most smoking operations will stop, just from the standpoint of it takes so long to smoke the meat anyway, that I don't see this going on the entire time we're open.
Are smokers run always with someone there? Like, they're not running overnight or anything?
Oh, no, no, we would never run that over. Yeah.
I'm just-
Always be attended. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I'm not a big smoker of meats myself. Okay, so let's see here. If there are no more questions for the applicant, then I will now go ahead and open up the public comment on this matter. So a reminder that speakers are limited to three minutes, and comments are to be germane to the topic at hand and civil. Do we have any people wishing to speak on this topic from the public?
Madam Chair, I see we have five attendees, but no one is ready to raise their hand to speak at this moment.
Just give it one more half a second. Okay.
Yes, I do see a raised hand. We have speaker number 857.
Okay, 857, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Good evening, Commission. Kind of excited about this project and the possibilities, but have some concerns. The, who is the applicant on this? It seems like it's either a potential tenant, a property manager. We don't have a property owner requesting this application. And I think it's kind of important to have like a property owner step forward and put forward the application because the other two, they kind of come and go. I kind of disagree with the staff request for bicycle rack. You'll be encouraging drunk bicycle driving. Also, I believe there is an authorized pot shop kitty corner across the street, kind of a poorly lit street, and you might have inebriated patrons of both facilities walking across the street with no crosswalks and no whatever. Anyway, so you're going to have inebriated people coming back and forth between the shop and the shop. I agree that the parking lot lighting is crucial. The parking requirements is crucial. If you look at the brewery up over just east of Cedar Ravine, they have events where you get 30 to 50 vehicles all up and down the street, parking every which way, congesting the street. So when there's an event, you can have 50 vehicles guaranteed. So take into consideration of that. Amplified music always seems to go hand in hand with this kind of establishment. So make sure you put in restrictions for amplified music. You have a residential neighborhood, Debbie Lane, I believe, right over the corner. And for Debbie Lane, do they, is that a private road? Do they have the right to put up a gate? And if there is spillover event parking going up Debbie Lane, what can those people do? As for the solid waste created, maybe you require them to get rid of it every three days, whatever. You can go back to the controls that you really put on tractor supply for backup trucks, beep 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 beep, the hours that they could do that. You put a lot of controls on tractor supply.
Okay, you could go ahead and wrap up your comments.
Am I still within my three minutes?
The three minutes has actually expired.
Oh, really? I would say do not farm out the signage and the lighting and all that to staff. Do not farm it out anymore to staff. The planning commission needs to make their own decisions and restrictions. Whether you table it and bring it back, that's acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Do we have any other members of the public wishing to address the commission on this matter?
We have no one else requesting to speak, Madam Mayor. I mean, Madam Chair.
Got it. Okay, great. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment portion of this and return the matter to commissioners for discussion and action. Do we have any other further questions for staff around the application, or anyone want to start discussion?
I can add something. There was a mention by the speaker, the speaker regarding property owner. The property owner did sign the application, which authorized the submittal for this before you. It's on page two of our planning application. The front cover, the front cover looks like that. Page two has the signature of the property owner with the disclaimer that the application states that the property owner further further agrees to indemnify, hold harmless, pay all costs, provided defensive for the city for any action challenging validity of the project. So they've they've authorized the applicant Dale Myrick to submit the application on behalf of Jake Gans and Gear Tooth.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. McFren.
Just, I'll just throw two items out there that I think would be relevant conditions. One with regard specifically to the spent grains that come out after the mash. Those can sour very quickly, particularly in in the heat of summer. It's not uncommon for those to begin to smell pretty bad in as few as six hours. So I would probably condition the project that spent grains would be removed no later than 24 hours after extraction from the mash ton or what's known as mash out. And I don't think the applicant would have much trouble or problem with that because they're not going to want to have those around anyway. Because they they can get really foul really quick. And then with the lighting illuminating the the general area of parking slots 3 dash 3 through 21, and the use of solar lighting would be acceptable. So those are a couple of things I'd like to have considered when we get to to a motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Friend, I'd like to follow up on your comment. There was quite a bit of discussion about the spent grains and other potentially hazardous substances. Do you know of a best management practice for breweries that we could refer to that would cover? You know, you called out spent grains in particular, but there was also mention of some other potentially hazardous materials. Is there a best management practice document for brewers, for small brewers that we could refer to?
I don't know that there is. First of all, with regards to spent grains, farmers find them quite valuable, particularly chicken, pig farmers and cattle. I don't think they'll have any difficulty getting rid of them so that that I don't worry about too much. But I do think we should condition the project so that they aren't, they aren't laying around. With regards to the other items, in terms of the, your dangerous chemicals, say your acids and your caustics, there are, I can't cite the the agency, but there are storage, there are storage standards for those, so I don't think that'll be a problem. And then with regards to oxygen in particular, but any compressed gas cylinders can be dangerous. Those need to be chained, and oxygen needs to be stored kind of separate from a lot of other stuff for for safety. And again, there are, it's either OSHA or some other entity regulates that. So I'm not sure they'll be performing. Then the discharge, particularly of yeast and or caustics into the sewer, the city does need to be, Public Works needs to be aware of that because that does happen and and can actually change the the water chemistry for the water treatment plant, which is not very far away. So the sewage doesn't have a chance to really get mixed up a lot because the run to the treatment plant's not that far. So I I don't know that we, I I know, I know Jay, and I know that he'll be able to find industry industry standards and and other local brewers in the area can help him out. I'm not too worried about it.
And also regarding the lighting plan, your concern is just for lighting a few of these spots as opposed to requesting them to submit an overall lighting plan for safety from one end of the parcel to the other. Are you satisfied with just specifying spaces 3 through 21 and the solar lights? Or do you think we need to be a little more detailed with a lighting plan?
You know, my my personal preference is wherever you have a driveway in particular, I'd like to see some lighting there that delineates the driveway. I think that makes it easier. And then just a, just a couple of, just a couple of of lights, maybe spaced every every six or 10 feet. Again, just provide a little bit of of candle power so people can can see where they're they're stepping and so on and so forth. But nothing major, nothing onerous.
To add to the discussion that we're having now, just to finish up with my comments of, I would like us to consider adding a maybe another condition or adding on to number 12 regarding removing existing fencing or gates that currently restrict passage from that area where the new parking spaces will be striped. Language, just saying that that fence will be removed so that people can more easily get from one end of one end of the property to the other. Since we are relying on this reciprocal agreement, we've also mentioned that there could be some new tenants. Right now, the parking lot, there's plenty of space because there are some vacancies. But that's our conditions today. So that's my concern. And I had thought that we could just append it on to, that is our condition conditions of approval number 12. Thanks.
Okay, so we have a couple of updates to the conditions. Is there any more discussion, or would you like to make them?
Are you looking at? You said condition number 12. Actually, there's 12 and 13 on the last page.
Right, so-
You're talking about condition, adding a condition 14.
Well, I had suggested we could just expand on number 12 since that is the where we talk about the reciprocal parking agreement.
I understand.
So I just thought we could expand on that. And then Commissioner Friend's suggestion of the spent grains disposal after three days could be condition number 14. I'm a little concerned about lighting, and I think I would like to make that a 15th condition, just so we we do get compliance with our concerns. Again, I agree with Commissioner Friend. Doesn't have to be elaborate. There is some lighting there, but this is going to have more use after dark. So I think it's a safety issue. So I would like to see some, some formal, but not elaborate lighting plan. So we could, we would end up with a total of 15 conditions.
You know, we talked about keeping things constant when we do things like this. And and I remember back when, if I'm not mistaken, Thompson's Toyota was talking about building, or actually got permitted, and they built the a new building behind for their detailing shop. And they provided for us a a lighting plan. And if we're going to, if we're going to have somebody that isn't going to be there most of the time at night, provide a lighting plan, then I think we need to do the same thing with this one. That if we're going to, we're going to say you need to do lighting, I think we need to be a little more formal than, well, you might want to do a little bit here and a little bit there. So my recommendation would be that we, we request a lighting plan be developed for this, for this business.
Sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna ask if that would be something that could come into play under the master signage plan? Or if that's not something that could be linked together? Not linked, but presented together because of the reciprocal parking. So then we're asking the brewery to put in lighting. And so wouldn't the lighting kind of come into play for all of the, the group of buildings, just like the sinus?
Yeah, that, that's, that's a good question. And going back to Commissioner List's comment, I think I, I guess the way I should have asked this to Andrew when we had questions of staff is, and I'll ask it now, Andrew, what, what triggers the requirement for a lighting plan? And as I made, I made note of the fact that there is no lighting plan submitted with this application. But what triggers from the city's perspective, what would trigger the requirement for a lighting plan? And I appreciate Commissioner List's comments that we do want to be consistent.
I, I wonder if the app, as, as one of the applicants represented, if I could comment to, to that, Andrew. I don't want to.
Before you do that, I'm Mr. Alvarez. Before you do that, I would like simply to hear staff's answer to that question. Cause just from my own edification, if there's something from the city's perspective that would trigger one.
Well, staff has treat, treats this particular site under site plan review slightly differently than a new constructed building, a new site to be developed. So staff does not look at all, every single criteria in the site plan review criteria playbook to apply to, to every single instance. The staff is, is responding to how the applicant is modifying the site for this particular use. Is it had existing parking? It had some existing fencing. Of course, the aesthetics of the building, the exterior finish materials, that's already out there. Though staff has responded to how this particular applicant intended to modify the site for this location, which I went through, outdoor seating, furniture, the barbecue smoker we talked about, as well as parking and loading berth demands. So in this particular case, the applicant was not proposing any exterior signage. Therefore, staff did not trigger the exterior lighting regulations and site plan review criteria for, for lighting. If the commission under its purview finds that lighting is necessary for, for this use, there is, there is, that criteria can be applied, but to, to be trying to think of the word that I want to use here. It, staff used proportional constraint to how this particular developer, property owner and applicant wants to modify the site for this use. Once again, we treated the Niemann's Auto Touch completely different because it's a brand new building where we can, we can look at all of the different criteria. I don't know if Director Rebus has any further comments on that, but.
But if I could, Andrew, it sounds like it's discretionary on the part of the commission as to what we might require or not with regards to the lighting.
Absolutely. During, during the public hearing process, members of the public can raise issues and questions and therefore conditions can be imposed. And under the site plan review criteria, there, there are lighting criteria. That criteria is also tied with the city's exterior lighting regulations where other commission members are now considering perhaps looking at a lighting plan to come back before you. That's where that particular mechanism is codified where a particular materials are, need to be presented and submitted to the city in which we evaluated that and, and for consistency with the exterior lighting regulations. And then the applicant and the application is, is presented to the planning commission for their review and approval.
So Madam Chair, for, for Commissioner Keeney and Commissioner List, from, from my perspective, I don't feel the need for an expansive lighting plan on this project. And, and I was looking for something very subtle and fairly simple. And I'm very concerned about what, what do we call light pollution and, and lighting that, that, that just escaped. So I, I admit it to be low key, but it seemed to me that something was needed on that frontage of Green Valley Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Friend. So that I, I'm clear on the two that we have right now under item 12, gates restricting passage to new parking spots will be removed. Does that sum up your intention for that addition, Commissioner Keeney?
Yes.
Okay. And for 14, disposal of spent grains must be completed within 24 hours of, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Friend, what was the process that you stated?
Extraction from the mash tun parentheses mash out. That's a term of art.
Okay.
Commissioner Friend, what was the timeframe? Was, is it 24 hours?
Yeah, you don't want to go longer than 24 hours. I mean, in the summertime, they'll start to smell within just a couple of hours. And I see Mr. Alvarez's face and I, I cut him off earlier. I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Sorry. I did want to hear staff's.
That's okay. Actually, Andrew Painter pretty much covered most of what I was going to say. The big difference, Mr. List is that this, this is not a new project. You know, we're doing, we were doing an occupancy change that triggered some additional requirements that we provided. And so we, we, it's not like we want to, you know, and we actually think that Mr. Friend's suggestion to put some additional pedestrian lighting is helpful because I think it'll help, you know, everybody in the long run. And so it's not like we have an aversion to do a lighting study, but you know, if you start to put in conditions to, for us to do a photometric study lighting, now we got to hire additional consultants. We have to spend more money and we're willing to put the lighting in. We, we think it's a great idea. I, I'm sure the owner will agree with me because it'll event potential lawsuits for tripping hazards. So you're just trying to avoid having to do more than the, the, the wonderful suggestion that Mr. Friend proposed, or what I think is a really good compromise and a really good solution. And, and that's really it. I think Andrew Painter captured the rest of what I was going to say.
Thank you very much.
My only concern with that is that it's hard to build on, do something about lighting. You know, that's like coming to a designer and say, do something about building me a house, designing me a house. We have to have your, whoever your designer is, whether it's, it's Kerry Collins or whoever it happens to be, has to have an idea of what is necessary. I don't think we have given you an idea of what's necessary, what we're talking about. And then we end up with you coming back and we're going, well, that's not what we meant. We have to take the ambiguity out of it and make sure that you understand what we want and, and you're able to do it. I'm not, I'm not suggesting we do a, a full study. No. But at some point, somebody's got to give enough on paper that we can agree that you're going to put in enough lighting to satisfy the city and to satisfy the safety of your customers.
Mr. List. Yeah, I think we're willing to do that. I, I think Mr. Friend, you know, pointed out some very specific locations of where the signage could be included on the conditions of approval. You know, if we have to give you back, when we go in for permit, we'll show it on our plans and we'll, we'll identify it. And again, we're not trying to not do this. We think it's a great idea. So I think we're all in agreement here. I'm just saying it maybe a different way.
Okay.
I hope so.
Okay. So would it be helpful to put a condition about bringing back lighting with the master sign plan? Because those will probably fall in line with occupancy, I would guess, happen sooner than later, I suppose is what I'm trying to say. I guess I'm asking you, Commissioner List, how would you like to reduce some of the ambiguity and how, because right now we are not addressing lighting in our conditions or anything like that. Do you have a?
I didn't have a, I did have a condition 15, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I did have, I did have language for condition 15, which would be lighting. Now, it may not, it may or may not meet Commissioner List's desire. And, and I respect him to say, no, I don't like that. But I, I did have something that we could try. The only concern I have with, with what you're suggesting is we do not know when that, that sign plan is coming back and the sign plan is not a condition of approval of the project. It's a, you know, it's up to the property manager and tied it with some other things. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure how doable that is. So what base, I'll just tell you what, what I was gonna recommend then for condition 15. Is that the applicant shall install pedestrian, quote unquote pedestrian oriented lighting in the area of parking parcels, numbers three through 21 is indicated in the construction drawings. And to include illumination of the driveway entering the parking lot. This lighting requirement may be met with a solar type lighting.
Just to go back around, I don't know if this is something I just don't need to worry about, but within the whole reciprocal parking thing, does it come into play requiring them to do this? Or is it, it's fine?
I, I don't think so because I'm looking at the construction drawings and I'm looking at, you know, Green Valley Road and, and just that whole stretch in front of that parking lot. And, and that's just the area that I'm, that I'm concerned about. The parking up against the buildings, I'm not concerned about. We have goose lighting there, right? I think there'll be sufficient stray illumination, for lack of a better term. That there's nothing there. It's just, it's dark on the Green Valley Road part of that property.
Absolutely. Okay. And what about spots one and two? We're not going to include those ones. You're muted. Oh, you're muted.
No, I don't. Thank you. No, boy. I don't hear that very often. No, I, I don't think I would, would worry about slots one and two.
Okay. So just to reiterate, applicant shall install pedestrian lighting in the spaces of three through 21 and to illuminate the driveway. This may need to be met via solar lighting.
Yeah, that, that's the intent. Yes.
Okay.
And Michael, you don't have any concerns about the parking on the southwest side? Where they're going to add the additional spots? Do you think there's sufficient lighting over there already?
Southwest. What are the parking spot numbers?
Next to what's labeled as the, as the warehouse on the plan.
You know, I, it, so that's like 56 through 68 or so.
Yeah.
I, you know, those are accessed by off of Debbie Lane and that real steep driveway. I, I don't see those coming into play. I really don't. I mean, I, I think the parking, the, the parking they're going to be using is really going to be all those in the front and maybe around the side of the dog training. But I, I don't see those on, on the Debbie Lane side is coming into play. So no, I, I wouldn't require anything there.
Any further discussion from commissioners? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and put forth a motion that we approve slight pen, slight plan review 20 dash 05 to request to remodel, renovate and change the building occupancy of an existing 3,200 square foot, single story building located at 7553 Green Valley Road. And adopting the staff report as part of the public record. And the conditions, if the conditions as specified in attachment B of the staff report, modifying condition 12 to include the removal of any gates that prevent free traverse across parking lot areas at the mentioned property and adding condition number 14 that spent grains shall be removed no later than 24 hours after extraction from the mash tun parentheses mash out. And condition number 15, the applicant shall install quote unquote pedestrian oriented lighting in the areas of parking stalls identified as numbers three through 21 of the construction drawings. As well as providing illumination to the driveway entrance and exit. This requirement may be met with solar lighting.
Beautiful.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Painter, can you co-roll?
I'm sorry, who, who seconded the motion?
Nicole.
I, I have a question regarding the motion.
Okay.
Can the motion maker member friend define what is pedestrian oriented lighting?
So pedestrian, and I think Mr. Alvarez might be able to help me out with this because when he said it's like, yeah, that's exactly what I'm talking about. So this would be ground lighting. So I, I view it as.
So it'd be kind of a ballard looking light fixture. Andrew, you know, they, they've got them, they're probably around the three feet high. The very top of it's got a, you know, illuminated globe, something like that effect. And you know, we could provide something for, you know, final approval, but that's kind of what we were thinking.
Yeah, I, I was speaking, I, I was hoping for more specificity. Thank you. That, that helps me understand what, what, what the intent was. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. So we have a first and a second. Mr. Painter, can you please co-roll? There's no further discussion.
Madam Chair, if I may, I would just add to the, to that condition 14, it would be subject to the review and approval by staff.
Number 15.
Number 15 regarding the lighting.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I accept that. As I'll, I'll amend my motion to reflect that Pierre. And if Nicole be kind of to accept that as a friendly amendment.
Yes, I accept that.
I should have, I should have put that in there.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead with the first and a second. So Mr. Painter, can you please call roll?
Okay, this time I'll go in reverse alphabetical order. Member List.
No.
Chair Lepper.
Yes.
Member Keeney.
Yes.
Mr. Godberg.
Yes.
Member Friend.
Yes.
Okay. So the motion or the site plan review passes four to one with Commissioner List voting no. A reminder that there is a 10 day calendar appeal period for planning commission decisions. Appeals can be made at the city hall with the city clerk. Okay. So that wraps up our public hearings for the evening. I know that we moved our, where's my thing? Our educational piece to, after this, however, I am looking at the time and it's about an hour long video. Are we all prepared to go ahead and move forward with that or?
I moved that we table this item until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
I too am in favor of that just because I think it will lose its impact if we're not listening to it with really more fresh, fresh ears. Does anyone else have an issue with that? Staff, commissioners?
Staff first, at least I do.
Okay. I figured as much. Okay. So.
Late for me.
Yeah, yeah. So do we need a motion to table that, that educational workshop or?
I believe Friend moved to table. I did not hear a second.
Fantastic.
All second.
Okay. All in favor by voice vote? Any opposed? Okay. So we will go ahead and move our educational workshop to a meeting appropriate to the future. We have one last item that is the bylaw review of a addition.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that to table to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay. Is that a motion? Yes, moved. So do we have a second? Would you guys?
A second.
A second. Okay. All in favor of moving the bylaw discussion to the next meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. So with that, we will go through matters from commissioners and staff. Staff, do we have any information that you need to give to us?
Nothing that I've prepared. No.
Many commissioners have any urgent matters they need to discuss? My commissioners have any urgent matters they need to discuss? Being none, I, I'm sorry?
I'm muted.
Okay. So seeing that, if there are no further matters, I'm going to call adjournment of the April 6, 2021 meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission at 9:11 PM.
Well run, Madam Chair. Well run.
I wrote a whole script out. I, I tried. All right, guys. Well, I hope you have a nice night and we'll see you next time.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Bye bye.